I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you for being here today. I just realized that I left home without my glasses this morning, so it'll be interesting to see how I can read some of the stuff. I thankfully know the material. Our next public meeting... Help me out there. You read the announcement.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, January 22nd, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. The annual landowners' meeting is scheduled for Friday, January 22nd, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cellphones.
I'm not sure they're gonna work, but we're gonna try. Hey, that does help.
I cancel.
The first agenda item is the consent agenda, minutes of the board of supervisors, regular meeting, and the special meetings held on Friday, December 11th, treasurer's report, and golf financials. Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, where are the notes from Monday's meeting? The Monday after the Friday?
We're not done with it yet.
I'm sorry.
Chrissy.
I'm sorry.
Are we gonna see the notes from the Monday after the Friday?
Yeah, I've got about an hour of transcription left, so it'll either be ready by today or Monday.
Okay. And then, the other question was for Mike, on the golf report, page nine. This is just a concern. Everybody's talking about how the... Am I loud enough for this? Everybody's talking about how the golf rounds are up in our performance in, I'm sorry, November. And our golf rounds outside, I mean, were down. So, should I be worried?
As far as November goes, I don't know if you remember the weather. We had really, really poor weather in November. We had, it was either a tropical storm or hurricane the first week of November. They came really close. I wouldn't be overly concerned with that, no. Our golf rounds are down. They were down compared to October, and they're down compared to December, but the biggest impact was that, was due to weather. We lost, as far as outside rounds goes, that weather impacted a weekend, so a Sunday was, we lost one or two Sundays in there, which was really detrimental to our stuff. So, the answer is correct. Yes, our rounds were down, but I would not be worried about it. Our rounds are back up in December, so we're trending in the right direction, so I wouldn't be overly concerned, no.
So, December, we're, obviously, I haven't seen it yet, but December, we're running over last year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on the consent item? Seeing none. Chrissy, call the question.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Harris?
Yes.
President Hatteling?
Yes. And the next item on the agenda is administering the oath of office to our newly-elected supervisors that are incumbents and old supervisors.
Excuse me?
Well, well experienced. So, Chrissy, you're going to do the oath?
Are you ready? Your first alphabetical order.
Am I standing up?
Neither.
Okay.
Okay, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
Say it again.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
I still don't know what she said.
I will support, protect, and defend...
I will support, protect, and defend...
...the Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States.
...and of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
And duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state...
Under the Constitution of the state.
...and I will well and faithfully perform the duties of office.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties of office.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
You ready? You got your paper?
Yeah.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government of the United States...
Constitution and government of the United States.
...and of the state of Florida...
And of the state of Florida.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
Duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state...
Under the Constitution of the state.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties...
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties...
...of office of which I hold.
Of office of which I hold.
Of office of which I hold.
All right, you're sworn in.
Well, welcome back for another four years, gentlemen.
Let me say, four more years.
The next item is discussion of speed recommendation on Ponce de Leon. This is a follow-up on the discussion that we had the last meeting. Do you want to lead this one, Tanja?
Yes, sir. So, based on the discussions...
Really?
So, based on the discussions from the last meeting, the board asked staff to bring back a recommendation for the speed on Ponce de Leon. What we're recommending is 25 miles an hour from Nadina to going, moving to the south to Sun and Lake Boulevard due to the entrance of Advent Health, the school, and of course, the daycare. So, we are recommending 25 miles an hour, and then, everything north of Nadina, we're recommending 30 miles an hour.
Okay. Sounds good. Any discussion from the board on that? I'm fine with that.
Do we have to vote on it, or we just say yes?
I don't think, I think we can give her consent.
This would be fine.
Any public comment on the speed recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Is there kind of consensus? Everybody has agreed that that's a good...
Let's spring up one point. Going forward, nobody changes anything without us knowing about it. Is that fair?
Correct. One more item I'd like to talk to you about is Columbus Boulevard.
Okay.
Mike, do you want to?
Yeah. Columbus Boulevard. Was the, Columbus Boulevard was, when the sheriff came out and did the over, they, that's where they follow most people. We also, Columbus Boulevard is where we have the most traffic of golf carts. We're also building a bunch of new homes and stuff there, but between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00, when the golf was going on, there's also a lot of traffic. So, I think that at 25, it'd be safer. We also get a lot of complaints from residents because of golf carts. So, if we keep the speed down, it'll be safer for everyone. So, that's the only, that's the only speed that I think we should keep at 25. We're also building a lot more houses down there. Kids are watching school, watching the bus stop every morning, and sometimes, you know, it's dark. So, if we keep the speed down, I rock that on Columbus. I don't think that we should put any more speed bumps, which we already have, but I think the speed on Columbus should be 25.
Okay, just to clarify, that was formerly 30, and that was changed to 25 without our knowledge?
Right, exactly.
So, you're referring to the last paragraph on this page. You want to, all the others are gonna change except for Columbus?
Okay, any...
Speaking about the speed bumps for a minute, the one on, by the dog park...
Yeah.
We have to put a post or something up, because all the golf carts are going around it.
Oh, okay. I haven't seen that. I'm sure they are.
Yeah, they are. You can't go, if you're going towards the clubhouse, you can't go on the left because of driveways and stuff, but on the right, you can see the grass is already shot, the golf carts are going around it, and I noticed on another one, you had put yellow posts.
Yeah, there's a bunch of areas that we had to do that.
Take a look at that. I think, oh, it's right out, it's right down the street here. You gotta do it there, too.
All right. I haven't seen it go there, but we'll do that. It'll be done by Monday. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody kind of agree with that direction for Columbus staying at 25?
Yeah.
Any public comment on this other part of the speed discussion? Okay, thank you.
Wait a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
Please. Bob Butts, resident. I don't know whether, I had one of my things to come here today to talk about were speed signs and speed limits, and that was on now Pebble Beach in San Bruno, on the west side of the golf course. It's, there's no, nothing there. There was never a problem before, but now, we're getting a lot of traffic, a lot of construction traffic, building houses, gonna, you know, mean more people, and they're really flying down Pebble Beach in San Bruno right now pretty quick. So, something we should consider, whatever you have to do to implement something, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, have you done any speed analysis there?
We have, we would put the speed sign out, you know, through the board, and...
Yeah.
Back.
Let's look at that.
Back to the board and take up what speed you feel it should be.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
March, that's done.
Good morning.
Good morning.
President Myrtle Beach. Last meeting, we had a discussion on speed bumps on Myrtle Beach, and I know they put the speed limit detector there. Has there been a determination made on the speed bump there?
Hasn't yet, but we are going through the reports right now, and we'll come back to the board and let you know where we should be.
Okay, all right.
Probably the next meeting will have, we didn't provide Bob Butts' area announcement for the next meeting.
What about sunrise?
I just hate to see a whole month go by, and then, you know, have this constant speeding going on through again for another month.
Yeah, well, next meeting's in January. We're still on this month for next meeting.
Are we able to discuss all three at the next meeting, or you're talking February?
Those are all three for next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Tom Costi, resident. Traffic engineers will do a traffic study, and normally, try to set the speed limit at the 80th percentile of normal speed. Therefore, assuming that the people that drive on it are the ones that are setting the speed limit, and that there are normally 20% of the people that'll go over what, faster than they should, but 80% will adhere to a safe speed, and that's normally how they're set. The other thing that we've got with regard to roads like Columbus and Ponce, and I believe Edgewater, they're feeder roads. The local roads are the roads in the neighborhoods.
Right.
And normally, the feeder roads have got a much larger, wider road right-of-way than the neighborhood roads do. Neighborhood roads are, I believe mostly in Sun and Lake, are 50-foot right-of-way with a 25-feet of pavement, and the feeder roads are wider. I think they run normally an extra 10 feet to allow for safer tracks, allow for the possibility that people are gonna go a little bit faster. We've got that new monitor that we do detect, and we can graph all the speeds. Are we using those formulas to recommend these speed limits, or are we just pulling a number out of the air based on somebody's opinion?
Well, we had a, we had a traffic study, trying to look out what we're going to do.
You had a traffic study. Did you use the formulas, or, when you say a traffic study?
I don't know what, I mean, I didn't get it.
Who's doing it?
It was, yeah, I don't remember the name of the company.
The traffic study was finalized in August of 2019 by Traffic Planning and Design, TPD.
I'm talking about the speed, the $20,000 investment we put in a, in a traffic monitoring speed limit sign, not speed limit, but speed monitoring sign, that we put out for that purpose. That's what we made that investment for. But evidently, you're not paying any attention to those, that collection of information. Thank you.
I'm not sure that's a correct analysis, but...
He's with checks.
Morning, everybody. Bill Nordbruss, resident. First of all, I thank you for the new sound system. It seems to be adequate. I hope everybody out here can hear. Excellent, thank you very much. All right, quick note on Columbus. 15 years ago, that used to be 35 miles an hour. It's reduced to 25. That's not a problem. The problem is that we have shotgun starts, and it's been very cooperative. It's only about four minutes between the 8 o'clock and the 1 o'clock shotgun. There's a lot of traffic out there, and they've been very cooperative. Is there any way we can kind of let them know through a newsletter that there are 8 o'clock and 1 o'clock shotguns? Try to avoid it, area, and please be patient? Is there any way we can do that? We don't want to put any more signs up.
You don't know, we don't know who's driving the cars.
I'm sorry?
We don't know who is driving at that time. How do you want us to notify people?
Well, if you knew what train was gonna go through at 8 o'clock in the morning, you wouldn't want to go there.
Who do you want us to notify?
I'm sorry?
Who is that we notify?
I think he's suggesting we put it in the communicator that goes on.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. I mean, people have been very cooperative. They've waited, they've backed up four or five cars. There's no problem there, but I just thought, maybe we just won't want to have a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? We've gone a little broader than the specific topic, but we've been kind of on the mainframe, so. Any other comment? I think we have a consensus that your recommendations are good, and we can move forward with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a discussion of the recreation plan, master cost estimates, and grant funding. So, I think this is Ariel. Can you walk us through this?
Absolutely. Good morning, supervisors. What was provided to you in my memo was a statement of probable costs that came from SNME with regards to the recreation master plan projects that were proposed and put into the survey. You'll see on there, they did a probable cost estimate for 10 of the projects. Within the document that was sent to you, I also included the survey results and the priorities that the community or those who took the survey kind of felt they would like to see within the community, and the percentages of folks who voted for that. So, you do have that in front of you. Each of the projects, as it was broken down as a statement of probable costs, as I mentioned, consider that more or less à la carte. So, some of those projects are extremely in-depth. So, take, for instance, the Aquatic Center. So, I know that there had been mention of what we could put, cabanas, or tiki bar, lots of different items that are within there. So, obviously, the cost estimate that was put in front of you is for everything. It's the fully loaded deal. Obviously, should we ever choose to pursue, we can, we can move some of that around as we see fit. What we are looking for today is going through these, if there are items on there that you see that you just absolutely feel are completely unnecessary, and do not foresee Sun and Lake ever featuring this particular amenity, it's just something that we would like to know, so that we can provide that information to SNME, so that they don't use their time and resources to put that into the master plan draft. At our, I believe it's either our next meeting or the following meeting, Bruce with SNME is going to be here to present the master plan draft to the board. So, what we're looking for today is just kind of a little bit of confirmation of the things that will be included into the draft.
Do you have any of the funding available that may be through the grants?
So, Tanja and I have been working with Guardian. They are a community resource group that basically assists you in finding funding that may be appropriate for whichever project that we are kind of laying eyes on at the time. We have provided them with this list and the statement of probable costs to kind of give them an idea of what we were looking for. They sent us back, and I believe it may have been included in the presentation as well, or as part of the memo or email. They sent us back an email of different grants that we would be eligible for with some of these projects. The next phase in their assistance to us is a little bit more drilled in, and a little bit more specific to say, okay, we are looking at the promenade. You specifically would be eligible for X, Y, Z, and then they assist us from there in the application, and the grant writing, and things of that nature.
Well, as I've stated before, and I'm gonna state again, until you tell me what the cost is going to be, I will not have any priorities. We don't have the money, and unless you can tell me what kind of grant money is available for these type of projects, that will determine whether or not we can proceed or not, in my opinion.
Well, you gotta decide first what you want to try and do before they can give you an idea of what it's gonna cost.
Well, I think, well...
We haven't decided what we want to do yet.
So, just...
Right?
Well, we don't have any money to do any other, in my mind.
I understand that.
This is a master plan, not an immediate plan. The concept is, if we could draw out what we would ideally like to see developed over the next 20 years, what would it include? Because those kind of decisions will direct where we go incrementally over that time. So, the master plan's purpose is not to say, we're gonna do these projects. It's to say, these would be projects that we think would be nice enhancements that we would like to see over time at Sun and Lake.
And I understand that part, but I also understand, I want to know approximately what kind of cost am I looking at if I say this is one of my, what I think should be in the master plan, and I don't have that.
Okay, but the purpose here is, your approximate cost is the estimate of what it would cost without any grants.
Okay.
So, those are, those are the guidelines on which I would base a decision of, does it make sense or doesn't it make sense? Whether or not we can get grants may interpret whether or not we move forward with the project, but the cost here would be your, does it make sense to spend this money if we had it?
Jesus.
I tend to agree with you. At this point, I wouldn't approve any of these projects because we don't have the money.
Correct. If that's not where you...
That's why we're not doing, that's correct, and we're not doing that today. Today is, let's define what we would like to see in an ideal world, and see if we can get to that ideal world.
What they fund, what they may be able to fund to this year is that, if we wait a year, the numbers are all gonna change anyway.
Correct.
You have no choice. So, the question is, do you want an aquatic center? Yes or no? If you do, do you want it the way it's spelled out here, or do you want to modify it?
Right.
Then you go to the next one. We come up with a list of what we think we want. It may not happen for 10 years, it may not happen at all, once we can find out how much the funding is. We may say that's ridiculous, but you can't get a price until you give them what you want.
I'm not looking for a specific price. I'm looking for...
If you read this, the most you're gonna get is 50%.
Well, I did read it, yeah.
Well, that's what you're gonna get, is 50%. That's what it says.
Right. Can we get 50% on the promenade?
I don't know.
Is that realistic?
That's, that's not the question right now.
No, I understand that.
Because the question right now is, would you like the promenade, or do you think that's a waste of money, regardless of what it costs? So, in my mind, one of the things I would strike is the frisbee golf.
I would just go down the list and see if we wanted it.
Okay.
Right? Why don't you just take it page by page? Okay, first page is, I don't know, parking expansion. Do we want to spend $125,000 approximately for parking expansion? I assume that's just all out here.
That would be part of, yes. The concept would be, the parking would be in this general vicinity. And I, you know, in my, in my sense, particularly with the other enhancements we're talking, adding the parking makes sense. That's something I think we need to do.
You think it makes sense?
It does make sense. If we don't, if we're gonna increase the use of this area especially, we need more parking.
I mean, the only thing I would say about the parking is, I don't think we have adequate facilities for the golf carts.
That's a valid point, and that's something we should take into consideration as part of the plan.
Yeah, and I don't see any mention here of golf cart parking. God knows, we have enough golf carts in this city.
So, if you can make a note of that, Ariel, so they can be sure that we have adequate golf cart parking.
But I also would stipulate that we wouldn't do the parking expansion unless we did something else.
Correct. Yep. The whole assumption here is that we're gonna do something at some point, and we need to plan for what that something is, and if there's...
I'm gonna assume also that this is, these estimates here, we would end up getting bids on anyway, right? Because some of these prices are extremely high.
Yes, we would.
Okay. I mean, $3,000 for shade trees. I'm in the wrong business.
Okay. Okay. So, everybody agree that parking expansion is something we need to do?
Sorry, guys. Yeah, I guess. If we did something else, we'd have to do the parking.
Okay. This print's a little too small for me to read with these glasses.
That's okay. The next one is the island wedding venue.
Okay.
$175,000. If I remember correctly, in our heyday, we had 12 weddings.
Yeah.
A year. About, is that about right, correct? Is that about right? Anybody know? Was it about 12 weddings a year, Mike?
Just to speak on that a little bit, as far as on the island view side, yeah, that's probably about right, but I know they have more over, they have had others here, too. So, if you add those two together, I don't know what their numbers are. They are different than ours, but if you add them together, it could be higher.
That's correct. I don't have the exact number of weddings, obviously, in this past year, virtually none. Before that, this building actually ends up rented most weekends out of the month. I would have to work with Kelly to see what the exact outline is of wedding versus baby shower or other events of that nature, but I'd be happy to do that if that's something we need.
Well, this island view wedding venue, that's out?
That's, yes, that's the island in Lake Granada, yes.
I personally think to spend the $175,000, there's a waste of money. I agree.
I agree.
So, I would, I think we've agreed to eliminate that one?
Well, there's only two of us talking.
Well, he said Mike said.
Oh.
Can you hear it? I went like that. You want to tell Neil?
Okay, we can eliminate that from the master plan.
Yeah, we're thinking about eliminating the $175,000 for the wedding venue. I would concur. That would be a very low priority in my book. Okay, so that's out.
Okay. It occurred to me that I might have laid my glasses down in my car, and they were there. So, the next is bocce ball.
You call me old.
I know. Okay, so, bocce ball is estimated at about $77,000.
Well, originally, we were gonna do bocce ball.
Yes.
We had agreed to do bocce ball.
Right.
And then we kind of put it by the wayside, because we wanted to concentrate on shuffleboard, which worked out, I think, pretty well. Everybody's happy with that. So, I would say, yes, bocce ball eventually, but who knows when, but eventually.
Yeah.
I assume that bocce ball will be over by the shuffleboard area.
That is where it was proposed, yes.
Well, I would say I'm okay with that.
I agree. It's not a high priority item, but I... Beach volleyball, $114,000?
I think we're all too old to do that.
It's like, wow, why does it cost $114,000 for beach volleyball? Because we have to build the beach?
It's the sand claimed for West Coast. It's West Coast sand, very expensive.
I believe that was two courts, two, two beach volleyball.
Yeah, it's still a lot of money.
It's still a lot of money.
We need a younger crowd for beach volleyball.
Well, maybe we want to attract a younger crowd.
I would say no on this one. That's me.
I can't see it being a priority.
Yeah, I would probably take it out as well. I think having a good playground is a good idea. I'm not sure $300,000 is the size that we need. I think that's overscoped. Anyone else have thoughts on that?
Well, the price is ridiculous. But the concept, I mean, we should upgrade and have something for the kids that are, I mean, there are kids that use the playground.
Sure.
So, I think to upgrade the facility and have a decent facility is important, but not to set that 200, 300,000.
Right. Definitely understood.
I mean, again, there's some charges here, eight-foot sidewalk, $16,000. I'm not even sure, the playground includes two structures, a $150,000. So, I mean, I think the prices are absurd, but to have something is good. So, I don't know how you're working that.
Understood.
Okay, and then a putting course, $200,000. And the location of the putting course was...
If we had a lot of money, it'd be great.
Is this a putt-putt or just a...
It's, yes, like a putt-putt, like a, was it 18 holes?
Does it have clowns?
Only if you ask for them.
Good job. Yeah. You have to have somebody.
It's not a miniature golf course, it's a putting course.
I'd say the, to me, the playground's more important than the putting course.
I would tend to agree that it's, that way it would be a low priority in the overall plan. Anybody feel strong about making room for a putting course?
I guess the only thing I, Buttonwood Bay has got one. Talk to them and ask them how much it's used.
Is that the one there on the front, 20, right on 27?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I've never seen, well, I guess, I have seen people out there, I just don't know how, I mean, it's all people our age and whether or not they're... Buttonwood Bay is south of, just right by Lake Josephine.
Favorite putting?
Yeah. Right up front.
I never paid attention to it.
I think one of the things to remember...
Prioritize me, but I'm just, that might give you an indication on how much it's used. I have no idea.
One of the issues with a putting green course, or putting course, would be the added maintenance cost of maintaining an 18-hole putting course.
This is, what I'm thinking about is just like astroturf. It's not, it's not real grass.
Okay. But even astroturf needs to be replaced.
Well, yeah.
Depending on how much use it gets. So, you want to, are you recommending we keep the putting course in as a concept?
No.
Okay. Event and multipurpose field, $737. That's one of the more expensive items?
This I found to be humorous, because this came from the conversation that we had over the kids playing, what was that game the kids were playing? The kids, you said the kids would go out on that field over here and they would...
Cricket or soccer or...
Was it not with soccer?
Flag football.
No, it was...
It was cricket, yeah.
This conversation came over the cricket. We said, well, let's do something for them and see what we come up with. So, we went from having a cricket facility to almost $800,000 of a, it's just, it's just a joke.
Well, but if you remember, my, what I liked about this concept was that it provided a venue for outdoor concerts, which I think would be a nice thing for us to be able to offer in the community, whether it's, you know, Sunday jazz in the park or symphony quartet.
Build you a stand for like $200, $300, and put some chairs out there and they've got an outdoor concert.
Well, yeah.
Less than $700,000.
It's, that's true. There's a lot of ways to do it. It's cheaper than $700,000. But I kind of liked the concert venue idea, and the idea of making it a multipurpose facility increases the cost, because then you've got to do landscaping so that it can be used for multiple uses beyond just concerts. You know, if you're just going to set up a small concert and have people sit on the lawn, that doesn't take a lot. But if you want to have a multipurpose use, then it becomes more challenging to create the landscaping that works for multiple uses and would work better for concerts.
I mean, right now, we have grass out there that doesn't look too bad. This guy's saying event, multipurpose lawn, $192,000. So, he's going to rip everything up and put something else down.
Yeah, well...
Bermuda and irrigating.
I think, I think those are things that we can look at in the scope and whether or not. But I guess I wouldn't take out the event multipurpose field. We might look at scoping it before we build anything, but I think it's something that would be useful to the community.
If we leave it in, can we have him reprice it, being realistic?
If there were specific parts of this, and that may be a question for him directly when he's here, because I honestly don't know the exact answer. I am sure that he could revise this in any way that we see fit. I believe a lot of the cost that's in this was that they were talking about having to level it because there were some, the ground itself was uneven, and then there was a need for like bio swales and like rain gardens and things to help the water drain out, because it tends to get a little wet over there.
So, we have some drainage issues. There you go.
It's never going to fly for seven...
Sure. Understood.
So, we're leaving it in?
I would leave it in, knowing that we're going to have to re-scope it and get it into a reasonable fee before we do anything. And we may look at options that can be phased. Then we have the adult aquatics pool. And the concept there would be to keep the existing pool for kids' use, family use, and have a larger pool that can be used for adults, so that we have more capacity for the public. And that one's got a big price tag of $1,007,000 is the estimate. And it also comes with a cost. But I think based on the fact that our current pool system is overflowing with, with need, and we're hoping to grow the community, I think we do need to seriously look at improving our aquatic facility. So, I would, I would think that would be one to leave in. It's certainly something that's been on the drawing board for, for years with this But it's a, it's a big cost issue that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to pay for.
I agree. I think we ought to keep it in, but I hope I never have to vote on it. But it's, it's something we need, because we're really full now, but it just, if we're doing this for planning for the future, it's certainly something that's got to be done, but, you know, so I'd say, let's keep it in.
I mean, I would keep it in. I mean, look at all the building that we're doing. A lot of these new homes that are going up, are going up without pools.
Right.
And the people who are buying those homes are going to want to have a place to go. We do have a capacity problem at times, at times, not all the time, but at times. There's a lot of things here that don't make any sense. I mean, palm trees, $6,000. We're talking about a swimming pool.
Yeah. So, those are the kind of things, if there's specifics, that you want to take out. Those, you're right, we're talking about a swimming pool. What they designed was an aquatic center that has atmosphere, like a tiki bar.
I wanted a tiki bar at one point, but it's $80,000. So, maybe we don't want a tiki bar.
And it's $80,000 plus staffing.
Yes.
But I think we have to consider a larger pool. I'd, I'd prefer it be one pool as opposed to building a second pool. I don't know why we would have two separate pools.
I think the idea for that came probably most specifically from the survey. There was a lot of feedback from folks who took the survey requesting or just kind of saying that it would be nice to have an adults-only area of the pool, obviously with the...
There are ways to do it. We took, we saw that, excuse me, that coast down in Naples that we went to that one time, they had, they had like a, a bridge or something, and that kind of divided the pool up between the younger people and the adults. So, there's ways to have one pool, so the maintenance is a lot easier, but you have divided, so you can tell that there, you know, it's an adult section and a kid section.
Sure.
Or more so focused around fitness and wellness, and that's what we want to look at, because we have, you know, we have our morning groups that focus on their fitness classes. We also have had a lot of requests for a lap pool, so focusing on, on that too would separate the two pools itself. You know, we still keep this one for, you know, more of a family, children-oriented, but the second one would be focused around fitness and wellness.
I mean, I just might agree.
Yeah, I certainly see value in, in the two pools. Having belonged to a club in California where we had one pool and a lot of family activity. The kids don't always appreciate the lanes are there for swimmers. So, and the adults don't always appreciate that the kids don't appreciate that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with keeping a second pool in, but I agree that, you know, I don't think we need to build the Taj Mahal of pools. We need to have something that's practical and usable. Is there anything specific there that you want to take out?
On the pool?
Yeah.
You could take out a tiki bar.
Okay. How about the cabanas?
The what?
The cabanas.
Yeah, you don't need cabanas, I guess. I don't understand.
If it's a pool, why do you have all these trees?
For shade. This is Florida.
The trees inside the pool?
Yeah, they would be in the area that would allow shade to reach into the pool. So, it may not be, you know, if it's a fenced-off pool, they may be just on the outskirts of the fence, but they would be part of the landscaping of the construction. But I would, I would probably have less trees.
I mean, he's saying $38,000 for...
The disadvantage of shade trees is they put leaves in the pool.
Do we have restrooms now at our pools?
We do. We do have restrooms at the pools. I think the, the thought process here was that if we're adding another pool, obviously your capacity's going to change there a little bit, so there may be a need for some additional restrooms.
$200,000? I could build one on the golf course for, what's the golf course?
$80,000.
For both sides, with a coke machine.
With a coke machine.
And he wants $200,000.
Hope, yes. Definitely hopefully if we had to put restrooms in, we could do a little bit better on the price of them.
The concept of a pool restroom, though, is that it usually includes a changing area and a shower and some things you don't have on the golf course.
He's got showers. Plenty of showers.
We can get Georgia. We can get Georgia.
So, anyway, I think we've got consensus on the pool, but it needs to be downsized. The scope needs to change. Not necessarily the size of the pool, but the scope of the landscaping.
I'm sure, am I misspeaking? If we do something like this at some time, that we would go over all these changes and stuff, and this is really just deciding whether to do it.
This is just a conceptual...
Real, real broad strokes here. Just, just to give the planner some work. The next item is the promenade, which is an expensive $1.4 million promenade, but I think it would be a really nice addition.
This is the best idea and the most disappointing from the price table. I think a walking trail is a great thing to do.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think this is where we'd start. If we're, if we're ever going to do anything, we start with the, with the walking path around the lake. But for this price tag, I, you know, again, it's...
I just don't understand how we got the price, but the concept of having a trail around the lake, I think everybody would enjoy. It beats walking in the streets. A lot of people walk on the streets.
Just as an aside, on the promenade, have you had any what-if conversations with the nursing home owners as to whether they would provide us right away, or they would sell us the property?
We haven't had any conversations, but in looking at the property praiser, again, we would have to have a survey. It looks as if the common area for the villas that's on Catalina, that property is the property extends all the way around the lake and it butts up to the district property. So, the, the new, it's, they just, it's a new corporation that just bought out Crown Point. It doesn't even, it looks from, from what I can see, it doesn't even go all the way down to the lake. It's only the, that common area for the villas goes all the way around and then butts up to the district. So, it'd be two owners. It'd be the, the common area for the villas and then Dr. Upadaya on the other side. And, but we'd have to get a survey done to figure that out for sure. So...
Yeah, because originally I heard that they owned the property all the way down to the water.
I know, and I looked at it the other day, and it doesn't, it doesn't appear that that's the case, but that, again, we're just looking at, you know, mapping and GIS, so...
Hey, Mike, I'm curious. You get one of those trash cans, the metal ones? How much they cost about? You know? Well, the only reason I'm asking is this guy's, a metal trash can that's about this tall, how much do they cost?
$25.
Well, this guy says trash receptacles, 10 of them, at $1,100 apiece, $11,000.
Well, we, it's a way too many. He, he claims that you put the ground, concrete the bottom, you put the trash in the side of...
A pretty receptacle.
Right, exactly. So, would that still be starting discussions going all around and everybody getting in?
Well, my, my point on this...
I don't know if that has gone too far.
I, I agree with Mike on the promenade. This is probably the most, the thing we should do first if we're going to do something. But this thing is so full of miscellaneous costs that don't make any sense. For example, he wants to do irrigation of $48,000. Well, if we're putting a walking path up, what am I, why am I doing...
Because you're adding shade trees and needing to have irrigation.
I don't need to just put a damn path up with some benches and call it a day.
I think that, one of the nice things about this particular project is that I believe it would be very easily done in phases. So, if, say, one of the first phases was the actual walking path itself, great. If we then chose to add whatever later, I think that it's one that we could easily do in phases, because even things like exercise stations, after we spoke and we, when Tanya and I were looking at this, after we received it, we don't necessarily know that we need the exercise station. So, I think that's something that can easily be exed out if that was something that was agreed upon. Just things of that nature that, like I said, this is considered like the Taj Mahal of all promenades. So, consider this à la carte, and if we said, no, thank you, we really are not interested in those walking paths.
I think when he comes, when he comes back to us, we want the Walmart version.
Exercise stations, from what I understand, provides grant money.
Okay.
Because one of the things that you are doing is promoting health and well-being and stuff like that. So, my understanding by having walk, exercise, whether you need 10 of them or not, I don't know, but you have exercise stations on there, you do make yourself more eligible for grant money.
Okay.
There's, there's been some discussion too, that just the promenade could provide some grant money from the prospect of providing safe access for schoolchildren. So, you're right, adding the health stations is a good thing and probably would, but if, if it adds $100,000... thousand dollar cost, but only generates fifty thousand in grant money, yeah, that may not-
I understand.
But, you know, I'm-
We're saying that's a good-
I think it's a go, and I think, you know, phasing it probably is the way we're going to do it, you know, I like the exercise station concept, I think we've got people here that would use the exercise stations, but I think having the promenade would be a nice addition and allow more people to enjoy the lake. Okay, and then we've got the kids splash pad and slide tower. And I guess, Ariel, I'm going to ask you to opine, how much use do you think that's going to be to the people who are using the pool now, obviously if we're making the existing pool kid and family-friendly, I'm assuming that's where this would go, but, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, at the rates we charge, costs a lot to offset that.
Sure, absolutely, so I would agree with your statement that if we ended up splitting the two pools and say we had a more of a kids or family-friendly oriented style pool, then I believe, if, maybe not with the project in its entirety, kind of like we said with the other ones, but I think integrating some of these would be helpful, I think that a splash pad enables parents with substantially younger children to be able to kind of sit and enjoy that area without necessarily having to get in the pool themselves, so that kind of allows everybody to have a little bit more of a relaxed time, in my opinion. Slide, I would say would be obviously very well-used by children, but hit or miss as far as the price goes, we know we do have some water features that are in the shallow end of our lagoon pool now, those are definitely getting dated, so at some point we are either going to have to replace those or decide, maybe we don't want those, maybe we did the slide instead, so I don't know what the cost of replacing that is just yet, however, it may be something that we look at and say, if the cost of the, having to remove and then install new water features is less or maybe more than a slide, then maybe we can choose to do one or the other, as opposed to maybe having both.
Okay, well, I think the current plan he's got here has a lot of extra landscaping that I don't think we would need to do, and I think certainly we can look at how we can enhance that family area once we get the other pool constructed, but this would be kind of a low priority item for me, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it.
I don't want to do it.
Okay, maybe we just take this out and we can look at how we enhance the pool area separately, once we get to that phase.
Understood.
Any public comment on the discussion that we've just been having on the master plan? Again, this is nothing that we're going to say, okay, let's spend a million dollars and build a promenade, but it's looking at the overall concept of what we'd like to do to enhance the facilities here for the community.
We're going to see that in February, are you going to get back to us at the February meeting, is that when you're going to do it?
That's correct, yes, Bruce will be back to present your draft.
Okay.
Dave Halbig, resident, I probably, I may have missed it a while ago, but the Guardian Community Resource Management, if we sign a contract, some sort of agreement with them, I'm curious as to what the master plan is going to cost, once we get to the point of what we're going to leave in and what we're going to take out.
Well, the cost of developing the master plan is budgeted, so if that's what you're asking about, we can give you that number, if you're talking what it's going to cost to develop all of this, we can't tell you that yet, that's, we're refining the scope of it right now, and in February they're going to bring back more strong numbers that we'll use, and then we'll be out seeking grants to offset some of that cost, but we don't know what it's going to cost to build this, if that's what you're asking.
Well, what does it cost so far for, to get to this point?
Tanya, or Ariel, either of you, you have that number, I think it was in the twenty thousand dollar range, twenty-five?
Twenty.
That's what I recall, too, is twenty thousand.
Twenty or twenty-two, I had to look for the exact number of it.
How much? Right around twenty thousand dollars, just over twenty thousand dollars to develop the plan for.
One quick question on the pool, have we got a history of the pool being at overcapacity now, the existing pool?
We have several days, it's been reported, Ariel, give us more details, can you?
You don't have to go through a whole lot, I just-
In a normal year, like I said, so this year is obviously a little bit different, but in past years, at least, since I've been here and from what I've heard from beyond, especially during the summertime, it is an every day we're hitting capacity sort of situation.
Okay, and they're keeping that data?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Norcross, the resident, I'm happy that, at least we're talking about a recreation master plan, I know the cost factor is tremendous, and I agree with Craig that you can't approve some of this pie in the sky type of thing, because without proper funding, a wise guy, a wise man, not a wise guy, said if you don't move ahead, you're going to fall behind, and this idea of being progressive in the community to not only take care of golfers, which we, but other parts of the community, they're infilling a lot of residential homes here, we can see the growth here, this year has been phenomenal, so you're going to have to supply enough room, enough swimming areas, so that these people can participate and be attracted here, so at least you're talking about this and you're progressing, I know the cost is tremendous without grants, so at least you're discussing that, and I think it's a good idea, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, do you need anything else from us, Ariel, on this, or you got what you need? Okay. Going back to the agenda, the next item is add-on items.
None.
Petitions and communications.
Yes, we have one, we have one from Mr. Halbig.
I'm sorry?
We have one from Mr. Halbig.
And in regards to that, the supervisor who misstated has apologized for misstating, you are correct.
Now, is another one?
Go ahead.
I'm correcting.
The supervisor misstated the facts.
I'm sorry?
There's two, wait.
Okay.
You've got two, the first one was about mistaking the facts, then there's another one about-
Oh, okay, okay. The interlocal agreement question I had on the gas tax, I happened to run across this accidentally, because I was looking, I was trying to look at some historical stuff on the gas tax and where we were, and it's, I guess it's my fault, I missed this 2017, what happened in 2017 with the county, and I don't think it was presented, I mean, David put together a nice letter, Ross McBeth put together a nice letter, but Ross McBeth had to be leaving that meeting thinking, boy, boy, did I do well, because had it been explained to the board, I believe, the board would have said, because it was improper, if we would have said we don't want to do this interlocal agreement, the county would have had the roads. Thirty-four years we've been taking care of our roads, we spend millions of dollars on them, and if the county, I mean, we've got over a hundred miles of roads, ditches, rideways, culverts, and I just thought this was a good way to get either directly or indirectly the gas tax, if we would go back to the county and say, look, let's amend this interlocal agreement, and you, and give us a prorated portion of the gas tax, if not, then we'll discancel the agreement, and they automatically have our roads, any road that is set aside for public purpose, which is every road in Sunning Lake, including Sunning Lake Boulevard, they would have to maintain it.
Okay.
So I think it's a, I think it's a good leverage, I think it's a good leverage that we can put on the county and not put on them, I mean, ask them about it, I think it's a good way to get, to get some of this gas tax money that they've been reluctant to give, or, they're not going to give unless they got a good reason to give it, and I think this is about the best reason in the world. Hey, we amend the interlocal agreement, you agree to give us a prorated portion of the gas tax, we pay, we got five thousand people in Sunning Lake buying gas in the county, we get nothing, and that's the way they fund their roads, they fund it with their gas tax money. And we also pay the county almost five million dollars a year in real estate taxes, and we don't get anything, other than the fact that, hey, we'll take care of Sunning Lake Boulevard, but even the median in between Sunning Lake Boulevard, who we had an agreement with at one time, they were going to pay us to take care of it, they don't do that anymore, and they've got, we're a cash cow for those guys, and I think we ought to try to, try to get some of it back, and I think this is a good way of doing it, if you don't want to amend, we'll cancel the interlocal agreement, unless we want to amend it, if you don't want to amend it, then we'll just cancel it.
Okay.
You got the roads, I think it's a good thing for us to work on, I don't know what David's thinking about it, but, and I don't know if this is a good approach, but to me, I think it's a real good, a real good approach, and a real good way of leveraging the county to give us some of the revenue that they're getting from the gas tax.
I can think of a number of counters the county would come up with, but I think it's a good approach. David, what's your opinion?
Yeah, it's not quite as simple as canceling the agreement, you have to remember that part of the assessment, our assessment dollars include roads and drainage, and so if we can't, if we say we're no longer going to take care of the roads and drainage, we'd better eliminate that from our assessments, because that's a benefit that we provide as part of the assessments that we collect, if we're going to turn that over to the county, or expect the county to come in and do it, we can't collect that money anymore.
I'm not too sure about that, what about before, before 1986, before 1986, we were assessing people for roads and drainage, and the county were taking care of it, 1986 is when we took our roads back, so I don't think that's necessarily right, David.
Well, I think that some of the laws have changed since 1986, that's what, the change in the laws what caused this issue to come up, was there was some case law that was developed, and that's what put this on roster, as to why it had to be changed, because the quote-unquote abandonment of the roadways by the county was done improperly, so, I mean, our charter states that, if I recall correctly, our charter states that we're to take care of the roads and drains, that's part of the law, so I think the best argument that we have for getting some of the gas tax is, Chris, you'll go to the last page, paragraph 11 of that.
Yeah, that was a good paragraph, I believe, I believe it, I think this-
It delegates us as the caretaker of the roads, county does, and that basically goes to be read in my memorandum, it talks about that, that whoever fits the delegated, that we, I don't know if I have the exact language, so the board shall receive the proceeds, exercise the power of the duties, so we, to me, that's a very good, look at that, look at part of the procedure, all the way down to the, to the terrible over here, almost the last page, yeah. Page three of that, yeah, one more. That number 11, keep going.
There you go.
The county and the district are going to stand up to its ordinance, something for that four, the district has been delegated and has accepted the responsibility of constructing, so once we've been delegated as that authority, then we have an argument as to why we should be receiving some of those tax proceeds, in my opinion, so that's, you know, we have to remember that we're creatures of the county, and we, the county created us, and hopefully we can do some of our own governing, you know, and take some burden off of them, if we go in there and start making demands at the county, they can very quickly end us.
I don't remember us ever making a demand at the county, and I think it's high time we do it, or we go, like Rex Bond said, we go to the county, we sue them, get all our tax money back for the, we've been paying them for nineteen, forever, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Well, we would lose that battle, because we're benefiting from other county benefits that those tax dollars go for.
First of all, we need to do it, we need to get after it, one way or the other, and get it done.
Tanya is having conversations with a new member of the supervisors that is our liaison, and we haven't abandoned the idea, it's just a question of how we get there.
Okay, thank you.
Is this, is what he says about us having the ability to cancel the agreement accurate?
Oh yeah, we've got the ability to cancel the agreement, but it's not, if we cancel the agreement, it's not like the county goes, okay, well, we're going to come take care of your roads.
No, I know, I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
Everything is.
Bill Norcross, the resident, I'm sorry again, but, you know, when Dave brought up that gas tax, that is a sore item with me, because I remember a few months ago, we brought that up in the district meeting about the question of the disproportionate, or the disproportional amount of tax, we pay seven hundred roughly, and the county gets twenty-four hundred, if it was the other way around, I think we'd be in better shape. Exactly, so, you know, when they, we don't, people aren't probably aware that we do not share the tax on gas, the county gets it all, and I think it's unfair, at least we should be checking it out, and I appreciate David for bringing that up.
Good, me too. Okay, that brings us to staff reports.
Good morning supervisors, I've got several things here to update you on, we'll start off with the golf course maintenance, we're going to do full year fertilization of the overseed coming up this week, just to harden up the rye, obviously we're seeing a lot of car traffic, so it'll help it endure that a little bit better. We had some cool wet weather, you know, early December to mid-December, kind of created a little disease pressure on the greens on both courses, just want to let you guys know that we upped our fungicide applications, and all that should be taken care of, I don't know if some of you have seen that, but should not be an ongoing problem. We're also going to do a granular fertilizer for the rough areas, maybe next week or so, just to try to keep the rough as active as we can possibly, to, again, try to combat some car traffic. We've got some tree work to remove some dead or diseased pines, tentatively scheduled for January nineteenth, and also, you know, as we get into the winter season, with less play areas that we need to maintain as far as morning grass and stuff, you're going to start to see the staff start to work their way out to other perimeter items, you know, kind of over the next month or so, so you might see some staff working in areas that you generally don't. If you've been on the course, I'm sure you can see we have a lot of ropes and stakes out there, trying to direct traffic, so they're not always wearing out the same portions of the course that we move around daily and weekly, it's a pretty big project to try to keep that going, but we're trying to keep our turf as healthy as possible, and, you know, it creates, you know, a little bit of issue when people want to go places that we want to try to direct them to others, and, you know, we've had some ropes get run over and, you know, moved, but that's kind of the nature of the beast, but we're going to keep doing the best we can to keep our turf as healthy as possible, as we see the added golf cart traffic, so we are doing the best we can, so that way when we get to March or April, it's not all dirt out there, so we'll still have a good product when we come out of the season. Moving on to the membership side, I think this is something that we want to make sure we're keeping an eye on. Uh, moving on to the membership side, I think this is something that we want to make sure we're keeping an eye on. So year to date, we're at about 917,000. Uh, year to date, last year, a year ago, we were at 1,058,000. So just to do the math for you, that's $142,000 difference on our pace. Um, as far as what we budgeted, that's, we're, we're still 123,000 short of budgeted. Um, just to give you some more numbers, last year, from this date to the end of the year, we actually added 75,000 more. So if you just kind of do that math, that's around 50,000 short of plan if we were to do that again. Now, I think there's a possibility that that number could be a little bit bigger this year as we've had some delayed people come down. I also want you to know that, uh, when I give you that forecasted numbers, you know, every, on every Monday, that where we're at now, that 917,000, that is only 41,000, uh, short of the number I have in the forecast. So when I'm forecasting, giving you those numbers where we're at to budget, I've, I've actually lowered that. So, um, if we made 75,000 from this day forward to next year, that would overcome the number that I currently have in the forecast. So the number you see could actually help us out. I'm sorry, that could be a little confusing without having it in front of you. But, um, I just want to let you know that, you know, we're, we're making those plans now. Um, international memberships? We have, uh, 11 memberships. It's a little tricky. So there's been 11 members that have, um, memberships that have taken up, so there's 10 couples and one single that have taken advantage of this. Um, they have so, they have so far purchased 20 months' worth. So some have had one month, two months, because they got to get billed monthly doing this. So we've sold 20 months of international memberships, uh, which is equated to about $15,000. And obviously, that'll keep going as we go. Hopefully, some more folks will be able to come down and take advantage of that.
I thought these were monthly, aren't they monthly?
They are monthly. So they get billed every month. So if, if I've been here three months already, I account for three of those 20 months that we've sold. Um, there's 11 memberships. So 10 couples and one single are currently in this program.
Okay, that's the only number.
Right, so.
And, and my understanding would be that that concept of creating the monthly international memberships as an accommodation to the COVID situation is one of the reasons that our membership revenue is down, because we aren't getting the full memberships.
Yes, that is correct. Also, to note the fact that we wanted to make them feel comfortable
Right.
purchasing that in case they had to leave or come late.
I, I still think it was a good idea. It accommodates the, but that, that's, it's not that our memberships are really down. It's that our membership revenue is down because we're not being able to get those full, um, from everybody because they're not all coming down for the whole season.
That is correct.
Is there a way, you told us a few months ago that the, uh, Canadian membership or the foreign membership was about $250,000. Is there a way for you to give us a number of how we're doing with people here versus this year, last year? Without the Canadians? So we know. Canadians, we know we lost most of them.
Right.
That's your 11 memberships. That's Canadian. But do we know how we're doing, people from the States first, this year versus last year?
I would, if I just took that 15K out, it's right around 900,000.
Yeah, but-
This year, but what was last year?
One year memberships, I think.
Sure. I would actually, I, I have not thought to calculate it that way, but I would assume it's actually up with our, you know, mostly with our 50% off membership. Um, being that if you took, if you take our, our numbers from last year, you take that 250,000 out, you know, we're relatively, we're only 142,000 off last year's pace. So I would assume we're up.
So you're up with, you think we're up 90,000?
I'd hate to throw a number at it, but there's, it appears there's room for us to be up. I just haven't calculated it in that manner.
That'd be the logical assumption based on what we're seeing.
I'd love to see that. That's great if it's true.
Right.
What is our standard, what is our normal international membership?
In a dollar amount?
No, number.
In a number amount?
Number of people.
I don't have that on top of my head. I just remember we calculated it to 250,000.
And then I said 5,000, so 50,000, 50. 50 families, yeah.
Yeah, that probably sounds about right.
And we've got 11 fami, 10 families signed up.
Yes. Um, so good news on the, the 50% off membership. Uh, we did have several more expire. So we have now had 39 expire, at which 21 have rejoined on a regular membership. So that's 54% retention, which is still good. So that means we've actually have a lot, all that revenue, since it's that 50%, if we're seeing that, at the 50% retention, we're maintaining all of that revenue. Um, and we currently still have 58 active, uh, members in that program. So, memberships in that program, I should say.
Yeah, I'd say that's successful.
Yes.
Well, if we keep building homes, you're going to have a lot more net.
Yeah. So, um, it's, it's, it's been well more than what I expected it to be. So that's great. Mr. Brooks touched on the fact of we, with our, as far as our green feed, uh, revenue to date. Uh, this is actually unofficial since December, is not official yet, but it's pretty darn close. So for the first quarter, we are $28,000 ahead of our green feed plan. And that's with a bad November. Uh, November being wet and it, it was a bad November. So we're still approximately 28K ahead of our green feed plan. Um, now on to, uh, F and B business, which I will need some input on this. I had sent you guys a couple of different menu ideas now. I hope you guys had, all had a chance to look through that. So on the first menu idea, that's pretty much basically how we're operating now. So this was, uh, I emailed it to you guys a few days ago.
Okay, I got it.
All right. So with our current menu, which would be kind of menu proposal number one, our minimum labor to operate in the back of the house, in the kitchen, we would need two hotline cooks and one cold line cook. Um, so that would basically be three bodies to operate minimally. Um, and if we went to menu option number two, where we actually reduce and, and, and take some, take the, the cold line uh, option away, and we call it a cold line, it doesn't mean it's all cold. That's, you know, that includes our pizzas and stuff, it's all worked off of that line. We can actually remove one person. So we can go down to a minimum of two. Obviously, if it's really busy, we're going to have some more staff. But on the minimum side, it would be two. Um, and I know it's been a big push from the board to operate more efficiently on the labor. Um, and back of the house labor is, um, a large portion of our labor footprint. So, um, I would recommend in, in that fashion, if we want to be more efficient, I would recommend we go to menu option number two. Uh, that does reduce, uh, our menu size a little bit. But I'm open to hear what the, what the board direction might be on that. Does anybody have any opinions?
I guess to me, it's the same. Basically, we're, we're dealing with the same issues that we have always issued. I don't believe the chef is the right idea for this house. He will not, I mean, if you want 101 ways to make Yukon Gold potatoes, he's your man. If you look at Caddyshack's menu, just as an example, you know, you've got Reubens in here for 12.50. There it's eight bucks, nine bucks. Burgers are the same thing. I can go down the list. But I, I question, how can they have a menu that is pages and pages long of good, family dining type food with specials occasionally? And they can have all these choices, and yet we can't handle, we want to reduce even further our choices. We, we pay higher prices than they pay down there. And they're very successful, or at least they've been there for years. I can't believe they'd still be in business if they weren't successful.
Yeah, obviously, I can't speak to their successes or, or, or failures. I know our business here at the club is, is a lot more driven on the banquet revenue. And I know they don't do that at all. Um, that is our style. I mean, obviously, they are connected to a golf course, but they are two separate entities. Um, and, and we, we definitely are not apples to apples with them. Um, but a large chunk of our business is, is in the banquet side of things.
When?
Which is, obviously, that's the-
I mean, it hasn't happened this past year, but even the years, uh, I, I just, yeah, you have banquets, but so much could be offset with additional traffic through that restaurant. And we don't have it.
We're not going to get it?
It's, I mean, it's a pandemic.
Sure. I understand it's a pandemic right now, but-
Well, what do you think?
So, so just, just on this note, I, this is not a, this is-
You know what? I'm tired of this crap.
Me too.
Look at the numbers. Were the numbers before the pandemic and the renovation that bad? Were they? I didn't hear anybody complaining.
The renovation?
I didn't hear anybody on-
The renovation, they did a real good job. When we renovated the kitchen, I think that they did a good job in there as far as keeping the, the money up. We did a good job during the renovation too.
Just to note on that topic, so obviously, this is not a long-term solution. This is a temporary solution to run more efficiently in the times that we are given right now. Um, and I'm okay with either option. I'm just letting you know that if we do, if we continue to do what we're doing, it will be tough to maintain our labor costs. If we go to menu option number two, we can run more efficiently. That's, that's the fact.
What is Kevin considered? Is he a line cook? Is he any cook?
He's, well, he, that's a great question. So if in this situation, there, there's basically either two stations or three stations. Now, Kevin can obviously be one of those people on the line, yes. You know what I mean? So he will fill one of, it doesn't mean he can fill 100% of that. But on days, well, I mean, he has, he, he has other things to maintain. So he has other tasks. So he can take shifts to reduce labor, which he does do now.
Is he salaried?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is he responsible for the kitchen?
Yes.
And by God, he can do it all. He can. Come on, it's a pandemic. He's got to make a sacrifice too.
He, and he does, and we all do. And that's, and I've done the same thing, and Andy's done the same thing. We're all taking on extra shifts to accommodate the best we can. I'm just saying, I don't, he probably won't be able to do 100% line cook shifts because he, he have a lot of responsibilities. But he does take, he is taking those shifts, yes.
You don't have enough people coming to dinner or to lunch to justify more than two people in that kitchen cooking.
I agree with you. That's why I proposed a number two.
But you're saying two and Kevin?
No.
And two including Kevin?
No, I'm saying two on the line, and, and two on the line could be Kevin and one other.
You're saying what? I'm sorry.
In menu proposal number two, we could have two people running in the line. Now, those two people could be Kevin and one other person.
Yeah, right.
Or-
Could make it happen?
Well, it is. Well, you got to understand that he is. He is already doing that now to help, to help with the labor. He just can't take one of those shifts six, seven days a week. You, you see what I mean?
It was three times a week.
He could. Well, yeah, no, he is. If you're looking at three days a week, he is, yes.
You're, you're, we're all saying, you, we need to cut the expenses. And you guys came and said, well, we got to cut the expenses. We're going through a pandemic.
Correct.
We're going to shorten the menu, we're going to blah, 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 blah. So I'm saying, okay, you guys made the statement, then do it. Don't tell me, hey, you're here, Kevin and one guy, that's it? Two guys, there's nobody coming in to eat?
Sure. But we operate 10 hours a day, seven, you know, six to seven days a week. It's, there's got to be a few other folks there. I agree with you, I agree with you, but it can't be 100% that direction. We're open to many hours. There's other things, there's prep work that needs to be done. You know, you're not always behind. There's, there's still some banquets that need to be prepped. There's other tasks to do. We can't operate 100% with only two people on staff.
You have no banquet. And if you have a banquet, you bring somebody in?
Kevin will work primarily in-
Absolutely.
What?
Kevin will be, and will work primarily on the line.
Correct.
Wow, just an hour and a half to get there.
Okay, but, Mr. Clarify, what you're saying, and when you say two line cooks, you mean during each shift, you need two line cooks?
Correct.
And because we have seven days a week.
As far as your menu, all you did was eliminate the pizza for all those burgers.
We, basically, on that sideline, right, correct, there's pizzas and there's, the salad station is over there. So we, the, there is, we're not eliminating salads, we're reducing the salad options. So, because that station is now going to have to combine with the hotline, if you follow me.
Maybe you had to change the way your stations are to accommodate what's going on. I mean-
Sure. I, I mean, that's, that's, that's the men, that is the proposal, to change our stations.
I have, you know, he's right. We don't have, there's another menu that I saw, tuna for sandwiches, BLTs.
I could go on and on.
Everything's under 10 bucks. We have nothing like that.
No. Two of us, two bucks. Here it's three.
We keep telling you, we want less expensive, especially lunch items, I would say for sure, absolutely. And, and you guys apparently don't want to do it. Or are you not hearing this? So I will ask one more time, less expensive BLTs, tuna sandwiches, ham sandwiches.
I, I believe this is a good discussion when, when we put together some of our workshops. Um, because we got to make sure we know what our goals are. And if our goals are to be, or to be profitable, we need to make sure that we are making the, the decisions that we want to make to reach those goals. And, and I, I think there's, to save from being here for 40 minutes on one topic, we propose to do these workshops. I think we need to. That way, we can sit down and understand what our goals are and make sure we're always working in the same direction as, we don't want to be bouncing back and forth through things. But we want to make sure what we're doing and the decisions we're making are in steps to reach those goals. So I, I'm not saying we can't do that. I think we need a longer discussion.
I'm tired of putting it on.
You specifically asked for feedback on your menu. And then that's what you're getting today. And I think what you're hearing is you've made some cuts, but we don't know that you've made the right cuts. We're looking for, for cuts that will reduce the, the costs of both production and for the consumer. Um, you know, you've got a largely older clientele that doesn't need big meals. I, I think, you know, senior servings that will allow you a, a lesser, uh, cost that you can pass on to a, a smaller price on what's being offered to the consumer. So simpler, at least until we get through this pandemic, and then we can look at how we position the restaurant.
Sure. Got it. We'll go back, redo the menu, send you something else next week. It shouldn't take long at all. You know, obviously, it's a lot of ways to cut, cut pricing.
Right.
Portion size, quality. We can do it. We'll have good quality food. It's not, yeah.
Yeah, quality is important, but portion size is a good way to save money.
Agreed.
Wait a minute. You guys are, you guys don't get it. That's one of the problems. You guys have not gotten it. And I hate, I'm going to, I hate to go to a different stuff.
Use your mic.
You have, you have not gotten it. That's what, one of our problems are. We talked about this during your, your presentation that, that Monday. You guys said, well, you, what do you, what do you guys recommend? Well, we recommend a family-style restaurant. That was, that came from you guys, not, you know, we asked, you guys responded. This menu looks nothing like it. You said you were going to give us a better menu. You did. We don't agree with it. Okay, we'll live with that. But you guys have got to listen to what we're telling you. And if it means that, in your opinion, we're going to lose more money, you tell us that. But give us what we want. If we want moderately priced food in the damn restaurant, then put it down and say, I want you to know, in our opinion, you're making a mistake, but here's what you want.
That, aren't the majority of the entrees on Friday and Saturdays?
Yeah.
Have, have, you know, realistic family meals and add, add a couple of specials on Friday and Saturday. We have the prime rib on Saturday.
Friday.
You have one steak choice, which is, you know, there's all kinds of different steaks that could be served, but I mean, fresh fish market on, on Friday or Saturday. But during the week, we've got to change our mentality of how- the week, we've got to change our mentality of how this guy wants to run this restaurant. And that's him running the restaurant.
Let me ask you this. On the dining menu, the sunset dining menu that you recommended, is the other menu, that won't be available anymore. You're saying sunset dining menu from 3:30 on. Is that how I understand it?
That was also a part of the recommendation. Doesn't have to happen that way.
Okay. Let me, let me just point this out to you, since you're going to reconsider your menu. That means the cheapest thing on the menu for dinner at Sun and Light, any given night, is $14. That's what it is?
Well, obviously, there would be daily specials as well, but the idea of
Your daily specials are in the 20s usually.
Well, those are the, those are not the daily, that's the weekly signature dish, which is separate from the specials, and they could be from wherever.
All I'm saying is
If we're trying, basically, the idea is, we're trying to simplify our operation so we can run more efficiently.
If you don't serve any meals, you'll be very efficient.
Correct. Also, reducing our average ticket price from $13 to $10 is not doing us any favors either. That's, that's my point, and that's why.
How in the hell is this, are they making money?
They're not going to come in and spend $15.
How's this place making money then?
Like I said, I can't, I can't, I can't speak to whether they are making money currently now or not. I can tell you, the restaurant business right now globally is not good. But I can't, I can't speak to, I can't speak to how they are making money. They, they may
They may not be right now.
They may not be.
But they sure as heck did throughout the years because they've been in this for a long time.
Sure, and
So, yeah, the pandemic affected them as much as it's affected us.
Sure. And pre-pandemic, we, we did as well.
Did what?
Made money.
Well, we, it's crazy, it's hard, I would love to sit down, and I could go through a lot of numbers with you, but pre-pandemic, our, our restaurant business was, was
Making money?
It depends on how you want to look at it. But yes, I'll show you what I mean. But I have to do it on paper. I don't have it right here.
You, you were making budget, but you weren't making money.
Yeah, and that's, we hear budget all the time. We, you know, I'm glad that you're doing good with your budget. The budget is losing us a lot of money.
You know, and Correct. So, I, again, I don't want to get too much further into this, but
I think you need to go back and revisit the menu.
We can do that. But which style would you prefer?
Well, like I said, we've
Simpler.
Well decided.
The more efficient, we can change the menu options, but are we going to stick with the more efficient, two people on the line options? Is that, that's the consensus I need?
Your expenses.
Yeah. Obviously, we want you to be efficient and provide the meals that will attract people, especially during this pandemic, when people are more selective about where they're going.
All right. Well, I will bring you a new menu proposal in the menu two format. It will be different options. Is that good?
I would, I would consider the pizza good. People eat pizza. I don't know why you took it out. Don't they like pizza?
There are folks that eat pizza, but that creates the other workstation. We can't do the pizza on the hotline.
If you're using workstations as an excuse, let me tell you, you're barking up the wrong tree because you're never going to get me to side with you.
They can't go over to the goal line?
We built that thing not for an excuse.
Sure. I, I understand that. Obviously, the goal on that menu option is to operate more efficiently. If we do the other stuff, we can operate that way, but it's not going to be efficient. Ticket times could last longer, and the quality, I mean, it would be definitely a heck of a lot more difficult. We could try that. I think we're opening up a can of worms on the other side, but I wouldn't recommend that. I would recommend either one option or the other.
How do we ever manage with the smaller kitchen?
We had a different menu. We didn't do pizzas then.
I don't know how we ever managed. Tarts or pizzas?
Let me, let me make a suggestion from a management standpoint. I know that, I've been in business a long time, retired now, but I've been in business through good times and bad times. When we had the recession in 2008, I lost staff and had to work more hours. So, I understand that it's more difficult to get the other things done and be a line cook that we're asking Kevin to do. But those are the kind of things you do when you got to tighten the belt. And I think that what you need to do is, you know, whether in rush hours, assuming there are some rush hours, if you need to go in yourself and help make pizzas, if pizzas sell, we should be offering pizzas.
Just so the board's clear, we've been operating in that fashion for several months. I've, I've, I have worked shifts. I've worked pro shop shifts. I've helped serve banquets. We, we are doing that.
I'm not talking about necessarily shifts. I'm saying, plan your staffing for skeleton crew, because that's what's efficient. And management needs to be able to step up and fill the gaps when the demand increases. So, you're not paying staff to be there for eight hours when you only need them for the rush.
Understood. Okay, moving on. I had, we had sent a proposal to you regarding our beer prices, in particular, our pitcher prices. Obviously, our cost of goods on our pitcher prices have gone up, have increased over several years without an increase in the price of the pitchers. The current member price for a pitcher is $8.54 or something like that, plus tax, which comes out to $9 even. We're currently running at close to 60% cogs on that, as a pitcher of beer costs us in the $4 range, depending on, $4 to $4.50, depending on which, which brand you're, you're asking for. So, the proposal is to basically go to $10 tax inclusive on February 1st, and then reconsider down the road to, to actually move on forward and maybe further increases down the road. I think the initial feedback from the supervisors is okay with that. I just want the board's approval to start that on February 1.
It's okay with me.
I'm okay on 10. I'm not talking about anything.
We can, we can revisit later.
Yep. So, go to 10.
Okay. Thank you. Last topic, as you know, over the summer, when we were trying to create more revenue streams, we found a kind of a low risk idea to try to open up the ice cream shop. And as you can see in the daily, or the weekly reports that I send you every week, that ice cream shop really hasn't come to fruition. It's not, it's not, I mean, it's not putting us, you know, any further behind necessarily than where we are, but it's not, it's not going to be, it's not going to be the result of a positive future. I mean, we would basically have to double what we're doing now to really see a, you know, advantage to doing that, so.
Short answer, we approached it as an experiment. I'd close it down.
Yes. So, the suggestion would be February 1 on that, too, so we can have some notice, move some products. So, I'm looking at closing that down on February 1.
I don't know. I made a suggestion that, before we close it down totally, why don't we try and bring it inside and see if anybody wants it?
Sure, we can.
We own it, so.
We do, and, and well
What do you mean by bring it inside?
To serve it out of the restaurant. So, there is some equipment out there that, that we don't own, which was part of why it was, was low risk, was that Hershey owns it. Whether we can move all of that stuff inside, I'm not sure. We can, we can definitely still be partners with Hershey's and, and serve a few different things, and we'll see what we can move. I don't think we want to, there's some things that I wouldn't recommend moving inside, but we could move in some other options inside.
I mean, I'll leave it up to you. I just thought, why not operate it for people who are having dinner?
Sure. And, and, you know, we can keep some options available, for sure.
I think probably the biggest drawback is you don't have any parking there.
I, I agree. I agree with that.
Mike, I just want to thank you for trying. I mean, we're full of criticizing sometimes, but that's what I liked, that you tried it. It didn't work. I mean, I was in favor of it, too. But I like the idea that you were trying, and just keep that up.
I appreciate that. I will, I will always do that, so thank you. That is it for my report.
Well, I'll knock you. I got a couple of questions on this thing that Brian sent out. Beverage cart, I guess you guys have made some changes to the operations as of January the 1st? What exactly were they? Because you said you're going to save here $750 per month. So, what did we do?
The $750 was on the, was the bev cart savings?
Yeah.
So, the proposal there was to make sure that the beverage cart, when it is in service, is operating at a 40% labor cost. Now, that may eliminate certain times that we run it. We may redo, if, if we're going to run it on a day that it's maybe cold or rainy or just a slow day in particular, we may eliminate that service and just tell our clientele that there is no bev cart service today, so plan accordingly. Do you need something now? Stop at the turn, or just give us a call and we'll get you something. So, the good news is, the good news is, the bev cart service has actually been running fairly good since we started, you know, we started making those proposals early December. But our bev cart service has actually been fairly decent, so we haven't had to eliminate all that time. But yes.
It sounds like you guys have to get, can you tell me what account number that is so I can follow the savings? Anybody know? Can you get me that?
The labor account.
The $750 savings a month, what account is that so I can check it?
That falls in the F and B labor category. It's not
F and B, so it's hidden. It's hidden. I can't really see it.
Well, it's included in other things. If you come see me, I can break it out via our UltiPro system, yeah.
Okay. It sounds like you guys got to work it out on what exactly the savings is, because I don't think you know.
We, we
Well, I'm just
It depends on how busy we are, for sure. But, I mean, it could save more, it could save slightly less. I mean, if it's busy, we're going to run the bev cart. If it, if it makes sense to run the bev cart, we're going to run it. If it doesn't make sense, we're not, is the idea. We're just going to make sure it's as efficient as it can be.
Then you shouldn't tell me you're going to do it. I mean, if you tell me you're going to set, you're going to change it, and you save $750 a month, I get excited. And then you know what we're doing, and I don't get excited. The other, the other thing that I'll bring to your attention, which I don't, there was this recommendation here to close the restaurant on Mondays.
Yes. I'm sorry. I did have one more topic there. We do that in the summertime. We close the restaurant on Monday nights. We don't do dinner on Monday nights. We do not see a large enough volume on Monday nights, which is typical in probably nationwide and most golf course restaurants. They're, they're not typically open on Monday nights. I'm sure some are, but it would be my recommendation that since we do not run efficiently on Monday night for dinners, that we, during this time, at least for the short period, we can always reevaluate, that we do not serve dinner on Monday nights.
With it being the busiest day out on the course, it doesn't go into entrees?
We would still, we would, we would, basically, what we would do in that proposal, that we would not be serving dinner, we will have the pub menu available for all those golfers that are coming in, and the bar is going to be open. So, we're just actually reducing labor, and we'll still have one person on staff to serve that pub menu for all of the golf groups that do come in, and the bar will remain open. Is that, I'd clarify that?
Yes.
Okay.
What is, what is the Sunday night menu? It's been referred to? I don't remember.
We have a Sunday lunch menu, because we're not open for dinner on Sundays year round.
But that menu will be, if I rate it right or remember it, that's going to be available Monday nights, too?
That will be available. A menu of that fashion, we could use that menu or the regular lunch menu if we were to do it in that fashion. But we would not, the pub menu, that, it's on, the pub menu is on there. We would offer the pub menu after 3:30, which would reduce our staff to one.
Okay. Well, I think you mentioned somehow Sunday night, because I didn't even know there was one. That's why I got it. But anyway, so you want us to decide whether you should close Monday nights and just offer a pub menu?
For the short term.
I would vote yes.
Yes.
Yeah. As long as you're keeping the pub menu available, I think that makes sense.
Yep.
So, we'll start that February, first week of February?
I would, I would suggest that. That way, we can advertise it.
And I would review the pub prices.
That's where this is the $8 hamburger.
Yeah, but you get, yeah.
It's McDonald's.
If you want fried fries, you add $3.50, and that's
Oh, yeah. He's right about that. The fry, you got to look at the fries price.
I'm sorry, which one?
French fries.
French fries for a basket?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little
It's two and a quarter now. But I mean, they provide an $8 hamburger with fries, and this is $8, and then you pay another $3.50 for french fries, which is
We're trying to keep you healthy.
There you go.
Yeah, okay. I got a bridge to sell you, too.
So, we're going to close Mondays, go up $10 on beer in all the first week of February. And we'll take the heat.
Okay.
Okay? And you'll get us a new menu in the next week or so?
Uh, yes. That's all I have.
You guys have?
Any other staff reports?
Real, uh, real quick, let me see. The month of December, we had 590 watch orders. We don't have a lot of people. I mean, that's not normal for this time of year. We're usually a lot, we have a lot less. But for the year, we did over 8,000 watch orders on the homes. And we had 240 calls that we responded to through security for the year. Those are complaints, whatever, whatever complaint people have. And we had over 2,000 warning letters sent out by code enforcement for the year.
2,000?
Over 2,000 for the year, yeah. So, that's pretty much all I got. We had a couple incidents over the last month. We had a, a couple homes broke into, which the person was caught, which actually, security did help, the sheriff's department on that. They caught the person, and they arrested him. You know, but everything else has been pretty quiet.
Somebody from in here or somebody from outside?
Um, I think it was a, some, well, it's kind of a, well, he was living in the woods, so I guess he lived here, but, so.
He wasn't a taxpaying resident.
Yeah. He wasn't paying taxes, though. But they did catch him, you know.
I'm sorry.
Well, you asked.
I know.
Okay.
This, the place outside, Mike, looks 100% better, just starting, getting it ready. But those obnoxious bushes are, I'm glad they're going.
Yeah. We got to do new irrigation out there, which we're working on. Of course, the speed bumps on Edgewater. We did, um, we did do some road painting over on ponds where we talked about. So, we're getting there, you know, a little by little.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tereger will know when. I'm sorry.
Um, Tereger, we're doing the letters right now. Matter of fact, Tanya and I and Drew met. Will we send the letters out next week, I think, or the week after? And, and we'll be working on that. You know, because Omar's got to, because it's going to be paint, each driver, I mean, each homeowner will, they'll, they'll be a cost to them. So, we have to send letters out to everybody, and, you know, it's a process. But we are working on it, absolutely. I've got a couple prices from contractors, so I have an idea where we're going to be. And I feel very confident the way we're going to do it. It's going to work. We did the same thing on Edgewater and a couple places.
So, then the next question comes to me, is how do we want to handle, because what we owe with the budget in that area?
Well, why don't you let us bring it back to exactly what it's going to cost, or, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
But we want him to proceed with it, right?
Oh, definitely. We got to take care of the drainage issue and
Right. Okay.
But we'll have to deal with the budget when we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Right. Thank you.
Was that list station scheduled?
Yes, yes. That's where the grinder's going.
That's all?
Yeah. Yeah, we're in progress. And that's, we're getting there. All right. Thank you.
And I just have one announcement. We are doing our new resident social on February the 25th in the evening. It's at the Island View. Historically, we obviously all always ask that if you are able or willing to attend as a supervisor, we would love to have you there. What we do with the new resident social is we send out invitations to anyone who has moved to the district within the previous year. So, it would be people who are new to the district in 2020. And we go over some of the information that was in their new resident packet, and they hear from the different department heads and Tanya, anyone from the board of supervisors who would like to speak. It's just kind of a nice little, once a year, we do a welcome to our community type thing with some goodie bags, appetizers and stuff from the restaurant. So, just wanted to let you know that that is February 25th. If you are able or If you are able or willing to make it, if you can just let me know, that would be wonderful.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up in the past with the audio on that? Have we figured out how to work around that?
We'll make it right.
Huh?
I said, yes, sir.
Okay. It's actually for Tanya's benefit because she has to speak.
We can do that.
Okay, any other staff reports? General counsel report?
Uh, litigation and foreclosure reports will be the next, official reports will be the next board meeting, but there were a couple things I wanted to bring up, uh, on the Avanti lawsuit service was perfected or issued on December sixteenth. So hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have received a response barring any request for an extension. Tanya has informed me, and I got some numbers today, that apparently we, there's been some discussions with Mueller about a-
We will call it fixed or proposed?
Proposed new system.
A proposed new system. It would be beneficial, and we can do this just by consent, if we're Tanya to have some negotiating power to, you know, discuss back and forth with Mueller about some potential, a way to fix the situation. Obviously, nothing will get executed or approved without coming to the board, but just giving her authority to converse with the Mueller representative about potential fixes and negotiating what we, you know, what, what we would accept as a solution.
I don't, I'm not sure I understand. Obviously, she's more than willing to negotiate on our behalf. Are, is she looking for an authority to negotiate a two million dollar deal?
No, 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 no. We'd say we're, we're, the, the issue is just, is we don't want to have to, I don't want to have to initiate any sort of a shit, because this would be part of a settlement arrangement.
Right.
So we don't want to have to initiate a shade meeting if we can avoid it. Shade meeting is, which we would have to put it on notice, and then we'd have to hoister you guys in a room with a court reporter and document everything that was said to discuss these negotiations. If Tanya can handle those negotiations, then bring a finished proposal to the board as a, as a, as a potential part of a settlement arrangement, that would be beneficial. So we're just kind of giving you the, the notice that that's what's being requested. I think that technically she has the, has negotiating power already, but we're just wanting to let you know that that's part of the process that we're going through and make sure that you guys don't have any issues with-
No, I think, I think she's fully capable of negotiating it, knowing that we're a miserable board and we're going to want a, a good settlement.
Gotcha. Um, also, we've received some instruction from the bondholders of all the stuff that's going on with the bondholder stuff. I'm happy to talk to you next week, Mr. Brooks. But they are directing us to move forward with some foreclosures. They've, they've, they've identified at least one, uh, I think technically two or possibly three entities that own multiple properties directed us to move forward with the initiating foreclosures against them, uh, based on the agreement that we have that is our, it is the district's responsibility to do that. So with your blessing, we're going to get that started up. I've drafted a letter, have to make some minor changes to it because I've recently discovered that they're represented, they, the entities are represented by counsel, which means I have to contact the attorney and not the entities themselves. But I've drafted up a, a document, a letter to, to them and notifying them of the issues. Hopefully, we're either going to recover the, recoup the land or get a substantial payment. My guess is they're going to want to dump, dump the land on us and we'll have to figure out how to handle that, we didn't expect that happens. But just to let you know that that's going to be moving forward, started next week. Other than that, if there's any questions.
Okay. Which brings us to the general managers' report.
Good morning, supervisors. I sent an update to all of you earlier this week by email, so that I'd like to focus on two, two things this morning. First, Mr. Brooks brought to my attention that the August thirteenth board meeting has a conflict with an MGA event. Is there any discussion on that? What, what the board did is that they added, we added a board meeting during the discussion time, and we didn't research if there was any conflict, so you had noticed there was a conflict. In looking at the other board meetings, we would have to move two board meetings to actually move it. So either we keep the board meeting as is and with a quorum of, you know, three or four or whatever, or we, we eliminate it altogether. There is a July thirtieth board meeting, so we cannot move it. Closer to July, there is an August thirteenth, there's an August twenty seventh meeting already. So-
The thirteenth, is that a two-day event? The twelfth and the thirteenth?
So I think so.
Is there any reason to meet on the eleventh?
It's not enough time between July and March.
The problem is, is I'd have to be able to finish them and prepare the board packets and have them distributed.
Yeah, okay.
I always recommend two weeks in between meetings or more. At a minimum, two weeks.
When's the, when's the meeting in September, the first one?
September tenth, which is a Friday. So we have two, two board meetings already in September, and then August twenty seventh is the other August meeting.
Wednesday, earlier July meeting?
July thirtieth.
And before that?
July thirteenth, which is a-
Wait, wait, let's, let's see if we can move the golf there. It's in the middle of the summer. We should be able to move the member, member in August, right?
It's on a Thursday, Friday.
It's on, uh-
Twelve thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen. But we should have, we could, there's only one MGA event in the month of August, we probably should, we could probably do it on another week.
Like the fifth and sixth.
Oh, Wednesday, Thursday.
I would, I would say, let's see if we can move the golf tournament, and if we can't move the golf tournament, just cancel the meeting. It was an add-on meeting. I think we added it on because we're usually in the midst of budget discussions right then and not having that extra meeting, but-
It's only the two of us. I mean, if, if push comes to shove, I'll just want to play in the tournament. I don't know.
True.
I mean, I don't want to miss a board meeting or cancel one that we might need.
It's possible. I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah, and if they can, we'll just, we'll put it.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. The second item I'd like to touch on is the capital discussion. So as we entered into the fiscal year, the board directed us to put a hold on certain capital items until January first. So now that we're past the January first deadline, I'd like to discuss those items that we've put on hold. Omar sent out an email yesterday, so Omar, if you want to come to the mic and we're going to talk through a couple of these. So in total, the board held five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of capital projects until after January first, so that was the total dollar amount.
I got a question there. I thought we suspended all capital.
No, we, the board, out of all the capital, the board chose these items as a hold item. The other items, uh, some of these for utilities, we, we moved forward with those.
So we budgeted for a very cart?
Yes, sir. And what board meeting was that? We talked through that? Was it in October?
Yeah, that was during the budget process and then in October as well.
Yeah, so-
Well, where are we financially?
Financially, I sent out the, you have the November financials. Both general fund and utility fund are ahead of pace. Both about eighty grand, utility fund a little bit more. So we haven't seen any impact on water and sewer, so we, those operations are fine. And then the general fund, we've actually seen an increase in assessments coming in due to settlements, new purchases, um, and just more, more payments, so. I think year sales in prior to twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, new construction have just increased our assessment base a little bit, so we're starting to see those revenues starting to come in as well.
Michael, where are you?
So Mike's golf numbers are inside the general fund. So the general fund is projecting, um, currently forty thousand dollars in excess. The forecast is about two hundred thousand for the year. Another big portion of that is the golf cart lease that we don't have a payment for this year. We budgeted to spend a hundred and forty thousand, but really we're getting a trade-in of two forty, so you get a zero. So that two hundred grand is really helping the general fund with golf, showing a positive light surplus for the year. We did show you on that, on that document that we sent, that there are a couple capital projects that we didn't have budgeted, that we are expecting to come up. One of them being this roof. Uh, looks like this roof has multiple leaks, and we're estimating that cost to be somewhere around forty thousand dollars. That can be give or take. Once again, that estimate is with metal. Uh, obviously, we could go shingle, and that would probably be a lesser. So we gave you a conservative number on that. We did have to replace one AC unit at the golf club, and, um, we're, we're working on quotes for the sidewalk next to the practice bunker. That's been discussed a couple times. We're working on getting quotes for that, so that's something that wasn't in the capital, but we're, we are working on getting quotes to get that done.
Where was it in the cap?
It shouldn't be under twenty-five. It wasn't a capital item.
It was a capital item.
So we're taking the money from, from the roads department-
It would be from the roads department, is what he's saying.
Why was, why was I told that it was covered?
Why were you told it was covered?
It was covered. It was in the budget.
Yes, in the operating.
So now it's a capital item? If it's in roads, then you had it, right?
We're just telling you projects that we're doing to kind of give you a status update, and I felt like that was one of the projects that's been talked about for about a year or so.
Two years.
It needs to be, it needs to be addressed. So financially, I don't see any negative impacts that we were kind of concerned with the pandemic, and even some of the slight impacts in the restaurant and golf are being offset by, you know, capital savings or cuts or reductions, so.
What do you feel needs to be done now?
So I would say the first priority would probably be the Aqua tee project. We're probably on a tight timeline for that, so that needs to probably start being done next week, um, early next week, getting that done, getting that RFP out. It'll probably take us about a month and a half to do the timeline, to let proposers see the bids, advertise them, get a response back, and maybe bring that back at a March board meeting, and then see if the contractors are able to turn that back around within two or three months. That's kind of going to be the, the deciding factor on whether we can get it done in 2021 or have to push it to 2022, depending on contractor scheduling arrangements and what the prices come back in at.
If you're looking at the on hold, and I guess that's all we're discussing, everything else seems to be happening in any way. The clubhouse updates and furniture, I'd still, I, I would probably still hold on that, because I don't know, you know, especially with business being as bad as it is. To spend another forty thousand there doesn't make any sense. The short game practice area for thirty-five thousand, no. I would say I would not want to proceed with that, certainly not before I saw something on paper that tells me what we're doing. So that's seventy-five thousand. The bulkhead and the sidewalks, absolutely, that bulkhead's going to, if it goes, we got a problem. The Aqua tees, we told the women we were going to do it for them, so I ain't going to tell them no. The, you know, the smoke tests and the infiltration repairs?
That's going to be the only part that's, that one's not pressing. Um, so maybe I- The only one really pressing that we need to start working on would be the equipment, which is the server, skid steer tractor, obviously the mulching head they're recommending to move, take out, and then the high service pumps are water, the water pumps for the water station. So we're buying brand new water pumps, one of them to be a backup in case there's ever an issue at the water plant. So I think those need to be at least spec, spec'd out and ordered.
I know we have to give Earl, does he still have? We got to give him some money for the concrete on the courses. We've got some serious problems that are going to ruin a bunch of golf carts if we're not careful. We've got nine turn, nine turn, we've got thirteen, the par, oh, excuse me, fifteen, the par three, Montardo, where the concrete is by the tee boxes, it's all shot.
So that's inside the twenty grand with the bulkhead? So bulkhead's twenty grand, and the sidewalk repairs are twenty grand?
I would give him that money right away.
So if that's off hold, then Earl can go get three quotes and get that done, because it's under twenty-five grand?
I think, yeah, because they're just going to have problems with golf carts. They're, they're getting pretty well, you're bouncing around out there like crazy. And that's it?
And the Aqua tees?
And the Aqua tees?
So basically, release everything except for the short game and the clubhouse updates?
Well, the short game, if they want to proceed, we got to see some.
Right.
They don't know, even know what, where the location is of what we're talking about.
Yeah, that was part of that, and I hundred percent agree with, with, with exactly what you stated with putting those on hold. The short game area, we still need to, we're not, we haven't come to an agreement of exactly what we want to do. We presented a couple different options. We haven't agreed on anything. Um, I, I think that's great to put that on hold till we know exactly what we want to do, so we don't waste the money on that. And the clubhouse updates and furniture, it's fine. We can leave that on hold, and we can, we can, we could literally wait all the way to, pretty close to the end of the fiscal year to decide yea or nay on that for this year, so we're good.
Just starts to pick up, then we-
Right. And that can, yeah, that can wait always. But, um, yeah, you're good with the other two. I think we're in agreement there.
I, I am considering the community center roof. I, I probably should have bring this up, but one day we're going to have to decide what to do with that roof.
Well, I'm glad you bring it up, because I was going to bring it up, okay?
Like the microphone.
Keep it as an exercise room with that shade, whether we expand it or make it a decent exercise room, or whether we just take it down. But I don't want to spend forty thousand dollars for a roof, and then two years from now or a year from now, have to go screw around with it again because we've decided what to do in that room.
Well, right. We, um, the roof is about seventeen years old right now. It's leaking in six, seven, ten spots right now. We have had it patched once or twice, right? Well, we have to decide, are we, uh, how are we going to go back with it? What are we going to use for materials? Are we going to go back with asphalt? Are we going to go back with metal to match the rest of all the buildings here, like we've done in the district office, like we have in our, our restaurant? But each roof we put on it is more money. For instance, the asphalt's cheaper, okay? And then there's two metals. There's a seamless and there's a screw down. The seamless is more money, you know, so we just have to decide which way we're going to go. So we're going to come in with three, three prices, you know, to give you, you know, what each costs.
I think we want, I mean, I would vote for the metal to be consistent with everything else that we're reviewing. You're reviewing?
I agree, I agree, but we've been, you know, we've flat this before, you know, on other places, so, I mean, I agree, I think we should do, um-
You have to compute things out back that got metal roofs, don't they?
Correct, absolutely. Okay, well, I mean, we got a, you know, we got a forty-year warranty on, on the screw-down metal warranty. The other one's about sixty, but, I mean, I don't think anyone can be here in forty years anyway. I mean, I know none of us are going to be here in forty years, so.
Speak for yourself.
Well, you know, but, I mean, that's a decision we have to make, but we have to fix this roof. This is a good building. It's used a lot, you know, it's used for meetings, for exercises, for these, you know, whatever, so, you know. So right now, we're in the process of putting a bid out to see what it's going to cost us.
I know, but if we do something in there, does that change the roof?
Well, if, no, well, it's not going to change the roof in there unless we add on. But if you add on, it's courts that's going to change the roof, you know?
We're very good at doing things several times.
You want to make the exercise bigger room, I'm with you. Just, you know, but tell us now. Just, you know, but tell us now.
These guys, I mean, I still, you know, we read these surveys and the survey says that forty eight percent want a better facility and they added for weights and stuff. We don't seem to want to.
Yeah, the exercise room is totally inadequate. And I like the idea of the hospital building the fitness facility.
How long is it going to be here by the time they say?
Yeah. It's, it's just going to be expensive to increase the exercise facility. But I, if that's what the board wants, then I think we need to get a bid on it in conjunction with getting a bid on the roof because it is going to change the roof line if we expand that room.
Right. Absolutely. I mean, and how, you know, how much bigger do we all, you know, do we want to make that room? That's, you know, and I think Ariel and I, you know, could work on that if you wanted to, but, I mean, I don't know how big we want to go.
I, I was a member for a year and I got claustrophobic in that room.
Yeah. But it does get used, so. And so do you want us to look into putting addition on that area? I mean, you know, I'm, it's going to cost us forty or fifty thousand dollars to add on a half a year of room.
Here's the deal, the hospital, but whenever they start, I don't think they even broke a contract.
No, they're waiting for a major sponsor before they move forward.
They're at least three or four years away from being close to opening up a facility. And we know, we already know that when they open it up, the price for the residents here is going to be at a minimum thirty dollars a month. So knowing that and knowing what the survey says, if they want a better facility here in Sunland Lake, you know, maybe we just go, we give, charge them forty dollars or whatever we need to charge them and give them a decent facility. I would try to come where I live and go to a hospital to work at.
I agree. Me too.
No, it is more convenient if you have a problem and you're at the hospital. I'll give them that.
We're still pretty close.
All right.
That's just me.
So.
So what's the consensus from the board? Do we want to get a bid for enlarging the fitness facility as an immediate project that we would need to take care of before we take care of the roof? Or in conjunction with taking care of the roof? And that's the problem is that we can't delay much on taking care of the roof.
Right. Exactly.
I would say yes, but it's up to these guys.
I would support it.
I have a hard time with, but then again, they're not, Advent Health is not doing anything down there to make it any better. But we don't, well, maybe, do we know what we have to have? Do we know what is needed? Well, that was my next question. Do we want to double the size? I don't go in there, I mean, I go in there, you know, fix things. Would you want to double the size of it?
These are discussions, we're going to have to really look into it.
Right. I mean, there's a lot involved.
With some information.
You want, you want to do exactly what we did with the shuffleboard. We want, I want tanglewood.
You say what?
I want tanglewood.
You want tanglewood?
Yeah.
All right.
I want tanglewood.
I know tanglewood, yeah. You know, I've been up to tanglewood and I think Mike and I have.
Go there and take a look.
Tanglewood's is pretty big. So, all right.
Okay. So let's, let's find out what the cost is.
Right.
If we're not at a top.
Yeah, I'd like to see the cost, but if you ask me right now, I don't want to do it, but I want to see the cost.
Okay. All right.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, I think we're all kind of, I think there's consensus that if, if, assuming we're going to do the roof because we have to do the roof, that the metal roof makes the most sense.
It's going to cost a hundred grand. It's going to cost a lot of money.
The fitness center or the roof?
Yeah, the fitness center.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be more than forty thousand.
Yeah.
If we can't build a bathroom for eighty thousand.
Yeah.
We don't get those sizes.
I understand that, I'm just saying.
We'll decide, you know, we got to, you know, we got to research.
Yep. Research your hat. Research your hat.
Okay. Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
This is when we open it up, the public comments. Anything that the public would like to address that we haven't addressed yet, knowing that there is a workshop coming up that will be addressing the, the golf course operation.
I'll try to make this quick. Dave Halbig, resident. I don't know how many here tried to get into this, this COVID vaccine website, but this county rollout was horrible. And I got an email this morning where Advent Health is offering vaccinations in Orlando Airport. Click that on and it's full already. So I'm going to ask the district if there's anything, Advent Health did such a good job with the vaccine, with the COVID testing. And I, I think probably until the hospitals get involved in this thing, it's going to be, continue to be a problem. And I don't know where, I don't know if there's anything the district can do and try to lobby the hospital or try to get more information. Nobody's got information on anything. You know, we need information. I don't know if, if the district can contact the hospital to find out if and when they're ever going to do it, or try to lobby what, what influence we might have to try to get, get something going there because I was, I think that the county thing was pretty much full for you. I was a click away, you know. At stroke eight, I clicked, couldn't get in. There was a few people got in and got, I think, got vaccinated. A few people went up there and didn't have an email backup. So I don't know if there's anything we can do or try to find out. If they're, if they're offering it in Orlando, I'm sure that we're going to get, probably not get as much, but probably Advent Health here is going to get something. So I don't, I don't know, other than call them and say, hey, where are we at? What are you going to do? And then communicate that back to the people.
Well, this is the first week, so there, there were glitches, yes. And being so full, I, I don't know. I think we give it, give it a few weeks, let's see what happens. I mean, of course, all of you know, the priority for vaccinations are, are those that are in the medical field and those over the age of sixty five. Am I right? Sixty five?
Yeah.
So I, I would say, let's give, let's give it a few weeks and see what happens. I know they're administering vaccinations at the mall right now.
And I think the county is taking the lead on that?
County is taking the lead on that. And I, I don't know what else we can do at this point.
Yeah, it's a question, a question of who is getting the, the vaccines delivered. And I understand that that's being delivered under the auspices of the county and they're overseeing in this area who's, who's getting the vaccine. So they, they realized they had a problem this week and I think they're working to address it as quickly as they can.
I believe so. So that's, I would say.
Yeah, I don't expect to get too far with it. I just thought maybe if, if anything we can do.
It wouldn't hurt if you want to talk to our liaison to see if there's anything we can do to, to address it for Sunland Lake, which is heavily in that over sixty five range.
Well, I saw today where Publix in certain locations was going to be offering the vaccine for DeSantis.
Yeah. Again, it may not be in this county because it's the, it's the distribution that has to be worked out. Yes. Is it on?
Yep. Larry Burchett, twenty year resident of Sunland Lake. I'd like to give you my opinion. Sitting here over many years and listening to many comments, and especially today, you got a problem. I think you know where the problem is and you need to solve it. The kitchen. Do you really need that guy, whatever his name is, to run the kitchen? How effective is the management of the people above him? Are they really competent? I've listened for how many weeks of telling this guy here, you got a problem, and all I hear is talk. I haven't been in that restaurant for more eight to ten years. That's sad, isn't it? That a resident of Sunland Lake hasn't gone to that restaurant. Why did I go to that restaurant? There's not an item on that menu that I'd walk basically for. I've looked at the prices of it. I've compared to some of the restaurants that I go to. I can go there a lot cheaper and have a lot better item than I can have in that restaurant. I think the management of that restaurant has failed because you can't get any, hardly anyone who's a non golfer to go to that restaurant and eat. And I'm going to eat my words because I made reservations for next week. I want to see what it's like. I looked at that menu and there's only one thing that I could have. That's a hell of a note, isn't it? Now, in all fairness, many years ago, my wife's parents lived here in Sebring, in Sebring. And they thought it was an honor to come to Sunland. They didn't golf. They thought it was really an extreme thing to come here to eat. And when we had come to visit, they'd make reservations, the restaurant would be packed with people. People waiting to get in. You have that now? So people have failed. And you know what? When people fail? Get rid of them. Get somebody that can do the job. And if they can't do the job, then get somebody else. That's the cold, hard facts of business, gentlemen. And I think you know it. Are you afraid to say it? Put somebody on the line if they can't do it. Clean house. Sorry that I'm so blunt, but I believe in speaking, speaking my mind. The other thing I've looked at is the fact that I looked at the numbers of this, whatever you call the thing of all the things we need. There's some real good items there. I looked, there was, I don't know how many, I believe there's close to thirty two hundred what do you call it? Water, water pumps or whatever. So that's thirty two hundred, very two hundred resident, we'll say, times whatever, two and a half or three. How many people responded? Two hundred and forty eight? Two hundred and forty eight responded to three thousand? Is that adequate survey? The company that did this, did they study the demographics of Sunland Lake? When we said we had a kiddie pool or whatever, all this other stuff we have, what are the I doubt if they did, but we were paid them twenty two thousand dollars. For what? Didn't we just do a survey a year or two ago with the same, same thing?
That's five minutes.
And these people wanted to make a, a big thing here to have concerts and everything. You know, I think we need to make some of the adjustments and I agree with some of the items that, that we've had. So I'm not being all negative about it. But, you know, we got the wrong people here. I'm, that's all I got to say. And thank you for listening to me.
Any other public comment?
I heard Bill Norcross said, Larry, that's a tough act to follow. It's pretty depressing sometimes listening to the negative factors. On the positive type of thing that I've talked with Mike Lemire and sent him emails and, for example, on last Saturday night, we had an excellent table of eight people where the food was good. And the only problem I had with the service is they didn't clear the tables. I don't know if it's a Florida thing or what it is, but it just bugs the heck out of me to have empty dishes on the table. Mike's aware of that and that's, that's good. And the other item is if you took all these tablecloths off these tables right now, it'd be a different look. And I think eight or ten tables in there with a tablecloth, there is any expense, like Mike says, in the upkeep and the replenishment. And I got it. But you know, sometimes you have to spend a little money to make a better presentation, make it friendly. In the holiday time, they redecorated the dining room. It looked, it looked nice. They dimmed the lights. They tried to make it more comfortable, caddy shack type of atmosphere, which is good. And I compliment Mike on doing those things. Quickly on the exercise area, I asked, and I asked for, there are two bicycles who are in the, I haven't been over there in six months or so. There are two bicycles over there. One was very uncomfortable to sit on, unfortunately, and the other one was, had a skip loop in it. And you know, it's a, it's a beautiful area because you've got, if you're on a bicycle for twenty minutes, you have a visibility out the window when they clean it. It's nice when there's no frogs on the window. I got it. All right. But to extend that, that exercise area would be a good idea if they could keep it up. And the other good news, I'll leave, I hopefully, Omar, that the, the money for their cot pot by the sand trap is good? Approved? Okay, good. I really appreciate that because that is a nice store and when you have visitors going out to the golf course, to hit those tree roots on that asphalt, it's very detrimental. It's a first impression, not very good. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? And I'll bring it back to the board for board to board discussion.
One quick thing, how many permits do we have? Ninety? The other thing I would like maybe Tanya and Mike to get, something with the outdoor furniture at the restaurant. It looks really junky out there right now. We've got to get some tables or some umbrellas or something. The people are going to stay out there with this pandemic. It's, it's not going to go away. And I, I really think that we need to do something because it looks terrible right now.
Actually, I would, I would take some, I agree. I'd take some of that money that we just said no for furniture and use some of that to finish off that area outside, maybe even umbrellas.
Yep. I got no problem with that.
I mean, it's great and everybody is using, taking advantage of it. Almost every day I'm in, now at the clubhouse, you go outside and there's people sitting at those tables. So it's a home run.
But I would also remind the staff to go out there and remove the glasses at the end of the night.
Yeah, and unlock the door so that when you try and get back in, you can get in. There's always something, you know, there's always something. But it's a good, it's, it's working very well, Michael. I got a couple of things. I just wanted to clarify for going forward. The Deer Run Fountain on number sixteen, what's going on?
We sent a contract to the company. They're going to back up. They did fix the turtle.
Turtle's fixed.
And we sent the contract and it has.
They said it would be a few weeks before they could get back out to do it, but they're going to do it.
So it should be done within the month?
Yeah.
Okay. Unit twelve, you had a meeting with, what's his name? What's Hornick's name?
Hornick.
Hornick? I never heard of your upcoming year meeting.
Actually, he stopped in yesterday, late yesterday afternoon to talk to me and we are, I'm going to be setting up a meeting with the environmentalist at Polston Engineering along with Mr. Hornick to talk about gopher turtles and sand skinks in that area.
Talk about who?
Gopher turtles and?
Gopher turtles and sand skinks. So we, we, I will be scheduling an appointment and a meeting with Polston and myself and Mr. Hornick.
How about the, how are we on the roads? Are we okay? That, that situation with Schumacher?
He said traffic is not going to be an issue.
Oh, great.
So we did find that out.
At one point, that was a big, that was something.
He thought it was, but now we're in the environmental discussions, which could be worse. Worse.
This could be worse?
Yes.
Gopher turtles.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't even ask about the hogs that are in unit twelve, but they're going, how they going to get rid? Don't want to know, right? Okay. Let's go on.
Yeah.
For the next meeting, I assume, are we planning a workshop on the strategic action plan, which would include the marketing information or no?
I, I don't know if the next meeting is going to be the right meeting either. We have the landowners meeting. I know that we also mentioned about the recreation master plan in February. We have some conflicts. Let me work through that here next week on.
By the time we get some of these things done, the year's over. I mean, we're already five months into the year. We had, we don't have a strategic action.
If we, I would like to do. I would like to do that at the next meeting and then put off the recreation master plan for February, what was the date on that?
And what about your goals and objectives?
That will also be at the next meeting.
That'll be at the next meeting.
If that's something that we can work in through the, let's see what the agenda looks like for the next meeting, along with the landowners' meeting, but yes, that would be the plan.
I did a quick review of the marketing, and unless I missed it, I see nothing in there for Midwest or Ontario that I've been talking about for six months or longer. To me, it's the same old stuff that we've been doing, and I don't see where that's going to be of any assistance to us in providing growth in this district.
Okay, let me take a look at that, and I'd like to get with you next week if we could.
Unless I missed it.
Okay, I would point out, we're actually seeing growth in the district right now.
I understand that, but that's not, we're being aggressive at it.
Okay.
In my opinion.
If we can add ninety homes a year, I'm good.
Well, we spent it two-hundred thousand in this market.
If we don't tell people about us, it could quickly stop tomorrow.
Okay, any other board-to-board?
I have a few things for the workshop, I don't have--
Okay. Okay. So it is eleven-thirty. Let's take a fifteen-minute break. The meeting is over, and we will come back for the workshop.
Some of these guys gotta go play golf, I hate to say.
So you don't want to take a fifteen-minute break?
Take a five-minute break, because some of these guys want to play golf.
Okay. Five-minute break it is.
Five minutes.
The five minutes is up, we're gonna call this workshop-- This is a workshop to discuss the process for moving forward with the discussions that we've been having on the maintenance and management of the golf operation and clubhouse and the companies we've talked to. I know we have some members of, at least some of that discussion, the teams that have been bidding here with us. It is a public meeting. We may have others on Zoom listening in as well, so I'm not sure that, there's been some concern as to whether or not we can have a meaningful workshop with the management teams listening in or being here. It's a public meeting, I'm not sure we can do anything about that. So I think we move forward with our discussions about where we go, and I think the, from my perspective, we've kind of defined an ideal timeline, but we didn't get around to discussing how we're going to make the decision and where we go from here. So I think the big question I would have now is, to the other board members, are you feeling like you've got the information you need? Is there more information you need, and if so, what that is? Do you have any general feelings as to what that, what decision we're gonna make, or do we need to have more meetings to determine what that is going to be, and then what's the process gonna be from here if we don't make a decision now? So, any thoughts the board has on that?
Did we contact the other companies, Tanya? The ones that have bid, or is it just, is it just Trune, I am assuming we call them now? Is that who we're--
Your question is, do we contact the other companies about today's meeting?
Yes.
I did not. Did you have, Omar, did you have any companies reach out to you? And they also copied me on that email, but I did not, I did not reach out to any other companies.
So, and just so that the public is fully aware, the companies we have talked to in detail have been Trune, Indigo, which was Billy Casper, and it's been our operator for a number of years, Brown, and Kemper Sports. And it was announced last week that Trune has merged with Indigo, so Trune and Indigo--
So, just to clarify the transaction, we are not, at this point, Trune. We are Indigo Golf Partners.
Okay.
And Indigo Golf Partners is an entity that will remain. So when you're speaking about the organization that has been your operator for the last so many years, it's Indigo Golf Partners, and it'll stay that way. Trune acquired our organization, and we are operating, you know, as a separate entity under their umbrella, but--
So we are technically done, then dealing with two separate bids for Trune and Indigo.
At this time, yes, correct.
What was that? Say that again.
We are still dealing with two separate bids. It's not Trune and Indigo as one, it is Trune or Indigo or Brown or Kemper.
Okay.
They're all four separate entities at this point.
So obviously, if you picked Indigo or you picked Trune, it's under the same umbrella, but it would be a different, it's a different operator, technically, because we have, there are two separate entities presently.
Very helpful clarification. So what, any general thoughts from anybody? Or you want me to give my general thought?
I wrote something down, you want me--
Please, yeah.
Very good. I couldn't figure out how else to do this, so.
Okay.
All right, now, this may sound hamish, I don't know. Pardon?
Use the mic.
That sound correct. Anyway, I wrote down, all presentations were good, and I took and learned valuable information and suggestions from all of them. I do feel that as good as they were, I could not find a good reason for any of them to replace Indigo at this time. Although I thought Indigo led us down the last nine or ten months from an expense standpoint, the board must take some responsibility for not calling out our concerns to the corporate management, having no workshops since September of 2017, and complaining to local staff but giving very little direction at all to the corporate management of what we wanted. I would like to have a workshop with them before I make my final decision, where we can talk out issues, and I'll tell you what, I went through all the recordings again, and a lot of, all these companies brought up some very good points or questions that I would want to sit down and discuss with whomever the final candidate is. For example, we're paying around twenty-eight-thousand dollars a year for payroll right now. We have our own payroll group of people at the district. I don't know why the district doesn't take care of it, we could save ourselves twenty-eight-thousand dollars. Now, I'm assuming these things, there may be very logical explanations why we're doing it the way we're doing it, but these are things that I think are of interest. Somebody mentioned the cost, actually, I know who mentioned all these. The cost website, golf price should match up with the Golf Now golf price. It was recommended our local advertising should be driven more towards the brand than the price. Players card, it was mentioned that there was twelve-hundred rounds, three to four-hundred cardholders for those twelve-hundred rounds. Is there a cost to it? Do we really need to continue with it? It doesn't seem to justify itself, at least from the outside. Somebody suggested a Florida resident rate versus an out-of-state rate, is that something we should consider? Alacard versus banquets. Obviously, we all had a lot of conversations on that, I learned a lot about it. The more banquet business you do, apparently, the more your expenses are in line, and the more profitable you have the abilities to be. But do we advertise our banquet facilities? Do we have a plan to even advertise our banquet facilities? We all know the banquet business will get better probably in the fourth quarter of our calendar year, but do we have a plan, are we prepared for it? I would suggest that we probably should update the pictures on our website to reflect what we actually look like, and we've had conversations on that in the past, but it was brought up by one of the presentations. All companies claim that they can make food and beverage run any way they are told, but they need to hear it from us. And that's a very important point, because we've talked for years about what we think is wrong, but we've never actually told anybody how we want the place to run, at least within, you know, except for maybe the last five or six weeks. But prior to that, we've never told anybody what we want. Somebody suggested reward coupons. Somebody suggested come up with a coupon where perhaps you buy nine meals, you get the ten one free. Incentives to get people to come to the dinner. The reward coupons were, or bounce-back coupons. Bounce-back, if you're a non-member playing golf, attached to your receipt, go into our restaurant and get ten percent off your meal, something like that. Again, it was a suggestion, but these are things that we don't do, to my knowledge, and perhaps would be wise and a way to make business, to get us more business. Let's see, just a few more. One of the benefits, oh, I don't remember. There were questions that I would ask Indigo if we were to stay with them. They claim they can give us an accurate monthly financial report going forward. I'd like to know when that was gonna start. That was mentioned that they could do it. I hear a lot about banquet managers and banquets, and obviously, whomever is in charge of soliciting banquet business is a very, very important person, and we have to make sure that we have the right person, and my, the question to anybody, any company would be, how do we assure ourselves that we get the right person to do that? The Monday night dinners we talked about, Tuesday and Thursday. Oh, there was mention about Tuesday, again, from Indigo, Tuesdays and Thursdays during the summer, perhaps we should have only a pub menu only. I thought that was a great idea. Obviously, during the summers, the dinner crowd is not anywhere near what it is during the holiday season or fall season. And then, you know how I am about waitresses and cleaning up. I mean, why do we have more than one minor cleaning up tables with the way we're set up right now? If we have to have a minor cleaning up tables, we only need one. There aren't that many dirty tables in the place, even though Bill will tell you that there are. One person would be sufficient to do it instead of the two or three that we usually have Oh, we were told that we could see public versus member sales in the restaurant. It was mentioned at the last meeting, and I like to, regardless, I like to start seeing those numbers. I thought that would be interesting to see, and whichever company that we do business with going forward, I'd like to see that. And that's pretty much, so I got a lot of questions if we went with Indigo or we stayed with Indigo. I see no problem, in my mind, staying with them, sitting down with them, having a come-to-you-know-what meeting, and if it doesn't work out in six months, getting rid of them. But I don't think we, I mean, I think they're doing okay on the golf side. I think they've stunk up the food and beverage side, but again, some of it is our responsibility that we have not pushed the issue. And giving Mike all kinds of crap, which I do all the time, is not the same as giving their management and telling them that there's a serious situation.
No, we did have a sit-down with them, one-on-one.
One-on-one stink. If you think one-on-one's gonna accomplish anything--
We're a board. Obviously, it isn't.
Yeah, we are a board. I don't know what you talked about. You don't know what I talked about, so how did, I mean, we either act as a board or we don't, but that's a source.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's where I am.
Okay, very good and helpful. Anybody else? Joe?
I'm agreeing with some reassessments. I think moving away from Indigo at this point would be inviting a lot of problems that we don't need, and we essentially have one major issue, and that's the Fangio. The Fangio results were a real front. Other than that, I think overall, they're providing what they've agreed to provide and do a pretty good job of it. So I took the liberty of, you know, lining up menus, and a couple of courses that Mike went to. I saw a lot of things that, one of them's closed on Monday and Tuesday. It worked late, whatever, we should close on Monday. All of them are closed on Mondays. All of them are closed on Mondays. Their pricing is comparable to ours. Obviously, we don't have anything about to push aside. I just think that starting over from scratch with a new organization at this point in time has got a great potential for disaster.
Anyone else before I offer a dissenting opinion?
Well, I don't even know where to start. But I never pushed Mike too much, or I had conversations when I went on one with Tony. And I don't know the restaurant business. I know quite a bit about the golf business. I just don't even know where. When we hire a management company, they're supposed to run it. I mean, I don't feel as a supervisor that I'm supposed to tell them how to make money or to run a golf course. They haven't done it. I've been on the board six years now, and it's going, I don't know, I don't know why we didn't do this. We're going the wrong way every year. Pandemic, kitchen, whatever you want to make an excuse for, it's going down. And our leaders are the ones that we hired to run this place. Now, I don't know why all of a sudden, I mean, I've seen greens ruined and we don't charge them very much for doing it. I don't know what you got to do in my time here on the board to replace. Now, I call it the establishment, but there's some people here that I call the establishment that want to keep things the way they are. I don't know why. I don't know how. I am encouraged that we're seeing a few changes, but I don't want to have to tell Mike or Tony or anybody how to run this goddamn place. I want it ran, and I don't want to lose money like we're doing. And it puts us in a tough position now. We got, it seems to me like they, Trune buys them, and that's all it is. I mean, Tony, I'd like to talk to somebody that just bought you. But I can't, I can't make a decision. I'm certainly going to support the rest of the supervisors, what they want to do, but I certainly don't want to give them a clean bill of health. And in the worst scenario, if we did happen to keep them, that they're still on probation and we can get rid of them. But we got to do, we have done, and Ray's tried to manage them and to do that, he just has a difference telling me. We're not the ones that's supposed to do this. We're supposed to hire somebody. We don't like what they're doing, we tell them, and if they don't change, the only way us board members have any, because I don't even, I feel, I feel going up to Earl or going up to Mike and talking to him about something, that's not my position. That's my decision to tell Tanya. And I'll tell you, the track record since I've been here is not good, and I don't know what we have to do. And it's very, I don't know what the rest of you talk, it's overwhelming, Tony, that the people of this community want to change. Now, you have a few here. There's some golfers, and there's a group, the establishment that I like to call them. But people that talk to me overwhelmingly want to change. Now, I don't want, I don't want anything yet. Because I'm not done, Tony.
Tony, sit down. This has got nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
Somebody put a stop to this. You guys are not involved in this meeting, and you should be talking about what you want to do, Mike, not talking one-on-one.
Well, I want them, I want them to, I'm encouraged this last few weeks and the last meeting that they're willing to change something. But I'll tell you what, and Ray, you said it all, this is an important thing. This is one-third of our budget or more. And I don't know, I like everybody here at Indigo. Our results have not been good. Now, one way or the other, however, whoever we keep, I want changes. And I want stuff going the other way, has nothing personal, nothing personal at all with anybody, but it's not going the way that I was elected twice now. And it's just not a good thing. And I don't want a rat and raven, I usually don't, but I just want things to change and I want them to get the best. And I think that's your job, not my job. My job is to tell you to do it, and if you don't do it, we get rid of you. But if you, you know, just so you know how I feel, and I just want stuff changed, and I want it to go in the right direction, because I'm responsible. I'm the one that gets the calls. I'm the one that gets all the complaints. That's all I have.
Okay.
What do you want to do?
I want to, I want to change. I don't know what to do. I'm looking for help from you guys, too.
Okay.
But it's not good what's going on right now.
Okay. Craig?
Well, first off, I have to say that I'm disappointed that Trune is not taking over the management of Indigo. I was very disappointed in the proposal that was presented by Indigo, that basically said that we are what we are and this is as good as it's going to get. We went from $160,000 loss to $140,000 loss to $120,000 loss. I really saw nothing in there to make me believe that things were going to be any different than they are currently. I don't. I want change. I know what we've got now. I'm not sure what we'd have with the next person, next group. I thought we had some very good presentations by Kemper. I think they had some real good ideas on what they do to find, make sure that they've got the right people in the right places. They have a very strict training program that these people go through to determine whether they're of the right cut, if you will, to manage and be part of the Kemper Sports. Brown Group probably had the best presentation of all of you. The biggest problem I have with Brown is I don't believe they are necessarily large enough and have the resources available should we need something done. So with that being said, I would not vote for Brown. Trune actually didn't put on that good a presentation, but I'm got, I'm kind of of the belief that they, the leadership that was here to give their presentation probably knew what was in process and didn't want to talk down what Indigo may or may not be I am very torn on what my final response is going to be. I don't feel that you've, I don't believe Indigo has really listened in the, of course, I've only been here a year, but that was, that's my opinion. I've been arguing about the restaurant as I did as an individual, not part of the board. I would never, I would not sign a new agreement with Indigo. I would, if we do go forward, it would be the current contract and it could be expired, you know, given notice in six months, you're out. But I'm really torn between Kemper and I guess it's Indigo. I thought it was Trune.
Okay, that's helpful. Let me offer my opinion, and then we can do some further discussion. I frankly, going into this whole process, I thought it was a healthy thing to do because we hadn't looked at what other operations could offer, but didn't expect that anything would come up that would make a change worthy. When we got the proposals, I was, as Craig was, disappointed with what we got from Indigo. Offering to reduce their base rate, but wanting a bonus even if we lost $200,000 and noting that that $200,000 loss is even with the district picking up the cost of the leases. So it's really a $500,000 loss. So it's like, wow, okay, that was a wake-up call. And then, when I see things like today's meeting where we've asked them to look at the menus during pandemic and look at where they can operate efficiently, and we get back the menu suggestions that we got today, that's an issue. And I've been on the board only a little longer than Craig, but I was here when Cliff left, and the, one of the concerns was, okay, Cliff left, there were three potential people to take the general manager position, one of which was Mike. One of them pulled out before we even interviewed, and the other one pulled out shortly after we interviewed, which really left us with Mike. Mike is good. I think Mike is trainable. Mike's got a good heart, but he needs the leadership that I don't see that he's getting from Indigo. I don't know how much of the menu came from Mike and how much of the menu came from Kevin and how much of the menu came from Indigo, but we need a management team that can give our local team the leadership and direction that's going to make money. And I'm just not seeing that we're going to get that from Indigo. So I've got real concerns about staying with Indigo. When I got the initial presentations and based on my prior experience, I really thought Trune was going to be the winner. And then, when I heard Trune and Indigo might be merging, I was like, okay, well, okay. And then, we got the presentations, and frankly, I was blown away by Brown. I thought Brown did a tremendous job of showing us the potential that we're not seeing. And that was, and again, I share Craig's concern. Brown has a lot of potential. They're small, so they don't have some of the firepower that might be helpful, but they also might have more flexibility that can provide things. So I was really impressed with Brown, and I was unimpressed with Trune. And I don't know exactly why Trune came across flat. Craig offered an opinion as to why Trune management didn't present well, but it didn't instill confidence in me that Trune was going to be able to do it. And then Kemper came through blazing, and, you know, if I were making a decision today without any question, I'd throw my support behind Kemper as a management team. So now, we've heard the opinions. Two would like to stay with Indigo for sure. Two would like to move, and I heard Craig leaning towards Kemper. And Mike, I'm not sure where you are, but...
Yeah, but either, I mean, I like, I mean, if I had to pick from the presentations we had, it would be either Kemper or Brown, but...
So now that we kind of laid our cards all out on the table, the question is, okay, let's pick up the cards and say, you know, what hand are we going to play here? And are we ready to make a decision as a board? Or do we want more information, more discussion? And what's the process? Cut.
I don't mind more conversation. I mean, I think it's nice that Tony and Brian showed up here if they want to talk, but I think if we're, if we're serious about maybe changing, we need to get Kemper and Brown back in here.
For what purpose?
To talk to her if we have any other extra comments, but...
Well, but the question is, what other questions would we have for them that would, in other words, we put together an aggressive schedule, and I was concerned with the schedule we put together, but we put it together because we wanted to be able to get through the six month notice and be able to bring a new team in at the right time. And if we don't make a decision quickly, then we're going to mess up that schedule. That's, I'm not one who lives or dies by schedules, but I just want to be sure everybody's aware of the impacts of delay. And...
Okay.
So it's really a question of, if we want to bring people back, then we need to have a clear reason that we're bringing them back and what it is we're hoping to learn from having them come back. I'm fine if that's what the board wants to do. I just need to understand what the goal and purpose of bringing people back is.
Okay.
I would like to ask Tanya and Omar. Is there anything that we, you're the ones that would have to be dealing with them on a day-to-day basis. Is there anything in there between any of them that you have problems with as far as you're being able to work with them?
I myself did not see any problems or issues. Just know that, you know, there's going to be hiccups in any type of transition. You know, there's going to be training, there's going to be banking, there's going to be all kinds of different things that will happen in a transition, but nothing specifically that I could point out that I could not work with any of those companies.
I'm going to shut up. I, if we do, if we get, make a move and do a different company, you're looking at the better part of fall 2022 before you'll get any indication of anything. Before, I'm willing to make that kind of sacrifice. I mean, because you work out the calendar. I mean, it's got to give them six months, then the other guys will come in, and then they're going to need six months. So you're into fall of 2022 before you know anything. I still think the best way to go, in my opinion, would be to sit down with Indigo, address the issues, get a commitment, come to an understanding and an agreement, and if they don't execute, it's six months down the road, we can say, it didn't work, and then get rid of them.
And then we're fall of 2023 before we have an improvement. Because how many times have we sat down with Indigo and expressed our concerns?
None.
None?
When do you think we did it? Excuse me. When was the meeting, Neil? Did I miss it?
No.
September 2017, we all sat down together. We haven't since then. Tell me I'm wrong.
Well, I've certainly had...
Individually.
No, I've had Tony and the group in here hearing our concerns in my two years on the board. I couldn't tell you exactly what date of that meeting was.
I challenge you on that.
Yeah. Tony, have you ever been here to talk to the board?
Oh, except for the budget. I'm sorry, he was here for the budget meeting.
And heard our concerns.
No. No, in my opinion, no. This is not, you guys aren't part of this conversation, in my opinion.
Let's continue the board discussion a little bit further, and if we need some clarification, I may call on you, Tony.
We've got something that is half-broken and half-right. Why take a chance on breaking the whole thing until we're absolutely sure it's the right thing to do?
No, I'm not looking at it as breaking myself. I'm looking at it, if we need to change all four wheels on the car, let's change all four wheels instead of trying to get down the road with three good wheels and a broken one.
Okay, if you've got two wheels that are running well, then you've got two wheels that aren't running well.
Then my car isn't running very well. Then my car isn't running very well.
You got my vote, I'm not checking it.
Okay, hear you. Yep.
I like to know what you don't like, Michael. You won't even tell us how you want to vote.
I, I will vote to replace them if I have to, yes.
And tell me why.
I would probably go with Kemper, just because I think Brown by far was the best. But Kemper is big enough, I guess, and it sounds to me like, from the conversations we've had here, that they want somebody bigger. That wouldn't be the, that wouldn't be the breaker for me, but, hm. I just, I just really want to reiterate, I have, I have expressed my opinion lots to the people, Tanya, Tony, not so much Mike or anybody else, because that's not my job. And we've had people get in trouble for going to voice, invoicing their opinions, but the only tool I have is where we are right now. I can't go and tell somebody, I don't feel I should. The only tool I have is replacing the top as a supervisor. And that's not, I don't know the restaurant business, I don't know the golf business. And I can't get specific, I mean, I can get specific on certain things, but I'm not happy, Ray. And they know that. This is not something new. Tanya and Tony know that I'm not happy.
Okay, so let me, let me try to move things forward and see where it goes. I will make a motion that we authorize Tanya to negotiate a management contract with Kemper Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so now we can continue discussion and open it up for the public. Is there any further discussion from the board before I open it up to the public for discussion?
I want to hear what Tony had to say.
Okay, he's part of the public, so...
Okay, so I just wanted to say, if I misguided you on the relationship between Trune and Indigo, please let me correct that or try to clarify it. What I was speaking to was how the business relationship was working, our entities reporting and so forth. Trune acquired Indigo Golf Partners. So as an entity, we are operating as Indigo Golf Partners. That does not mean that there is not a, an integration of programming and ideas and strategizing and other things from the Trune organization into our organization, and vice versa. Part of the reason why Trune bought us, one of the big reasons why Trune bought us, was because we are, we are the number-one operator in the municipal golf space in the country. And they are not. That's not their forte, so to speak. So they wanted our ideas, our methods, and so far, programming, et cetera, that work in that environment. And then, as a result of the fact that we have facilities that are non-municipal, let's say, or otherwise, you know, not run by a specific, you know, municipal entity, we, they could help us. So there is going to be a tremendous sharing of ideas, and I'm sorry I didn't clarify that earlier, I don't want you to think that they bought us and we don't talk to each other. That's not the case. The idea behind the transaction was for both of our organizations to complement each other. Their, theirs, in what they do really well, which we know that they're more of a, from a brand standpoint, they're more of a higher-end brand, and they, they have a huge specialty in the food and beverage side. There's no question about that. Ours is, as you have alluded to numerous times, ours is in, you know, is, is in golf. That's what we do, that's what we've done best. We do have very many successful F&amp;B operations around the country, but that doesn't mean that you can't be better at, you know, F&amp;B operations, right? And they bring some of that to the table for us. So there will be a tremendous sharing of ideas as we begin our transition into the Trune umbrella. And I would, and it would be, and it's logical to assume, though it hasn't been communicated to us yet, it's logical to assume that there will be an integration probably of personnel as well. Because they have, they have national people in departments and so forth, and, and we have, we have as well. So there'll be some sharing of that. So I just want to make sure you guys understood the relationship. While, while it's not correct to call us Trune, because we are a separate business entity of Trune, we are Indigo Golf Partners, they're, you know, you know, we are going to be working together throughout the country on, on our assets, and we're going to be looking at that as a, as one portfolio, you know, when we, when we discuss, or when we're involved in presentations and so forth, at some point down the road. So I just want to make sure you guys understood that part.
Thank you.
And if there was any other, I know this is a workshop, so if there's any other questions, I'm happy to...
Well, I guess my question along that line would be then, if we negotiated along the lines of the Indigo contract, or kept the current Indigo contract in place, we'd be operating with you, but you're indicating that they would help provide some additional food and beverage?
Yeah, we're, we're already in the process of beginning to share across departments, our ag department, our, our marketing department, F&amp;B will be, will be as part of that as well. So there's going to, that's going to happen. Do you have to remember, we're only, not even 10 days old into the transaction? So it's going to take a little bit of time for that to occur. But there was not, the, the purpose of this transaction was not to separate, it was not to own two fully and totally separate organizations, okay? It was to be able to complement each other as, as we go down the road. And that's, each other has some good, you know, good parts to it, and they want to combine, we'll be, we'll be a better organization. So each of the organizations involved. So I hope that, hope that clarifies it. It was just unique, I think, that, that this RFP, the timing of this was, was when it was, because we are new in this transaction right now, and, you know, six months from now, what is that going to look like? A year from now, what is that going to look like? It's logical to assume, based on all the information that's been given to me, that there will be a lot of integration of ideas and so forth and programming. So, in fact, we've already started, as I said, in some departments, so I would expect to see that. However, the business entity will be separate. There will be a Trune Golf, there will be an Indigo Golf Partners that is owned by Trune Golf. Does that help everyone?
Yep.
Any other questions with me?
So, so you're saying we probably wouldn't hear from anybody from Trune? You're the man, right?
Uh, well, I mean, right now, I'm the, I'm the individual responsible at, at Indigo Golf Partners. If, you know, if we wanted to talk with somebody from Trune, if you wanted to speak with somebody from Trune, and you notified them that you wanted to talk to them, then that can be done, I'm sure, the same way you could talk to anyone. So, and I think what you're, you know, they'll probably say very, you know, similar things to what I'm saying, so. Right now, we're in the, we're in the, you know, we look at this as an opportunity for, depending on the type of client, where one of us specializes more in one, you know, in one area than the other, but the combination of our companies, or the integration of our companies through time will be a benefit to whoever we are. You know, either one of the two companies is, is a, is a client of, so, or is a operator of, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other public comment?
You guys have a very serious and tough decision, I understand that. You can, you can possibly be very split on the whole thing, because you see qualities in, in all the areas, in all of, all the companies represented. And I, I, I like the idea of having the opportunity to see what other companies present. As a golfer, being involved in a golf business, not business, but in a golf course running, and I kind of understand. We only had, where I was, was a city-owned golf course. And so, and I belonged to three courses up there, a private course and a city course for 50 years. What we have here is, is a famous movie would say, a failure to communicate. And I understand with Mike, I can understand, he doesn't understand some things that happen are not happening, and he's not being communicated by the company. I understand that, and I think that could be patched or understood, it has to be done. Fully understandable. And, and to change, get bottom line here, to change command right now, I don't think would be a good idea, because we have valuable employees, we have people up there that, I'll tell you, Earl has done a wonderful job in this golf course. Now, we're going to throw out the baby with the bathwater and change, and then have the golf course go down and bring the restaurant up. We have to have a balance here, really. You have to understand that you have to communicate with these people here to have a successful business. I'm all for this place. I've promoted this place many times, I've had people come down here. The only problem is, as a large group, we are so far from the airports, 8,400, 100. And then people want to come down, jump in a van, go five miles, and go play golf. There's the problem, we have to attract them. But now, we see the economic change up north, 10,000 people a day are retiring. You can see it right now, because people can afford low mortgages, can come into this area. And then, when you progress, like you're going to have better equipment, better shuffleboards, whatever you want to have, it's attractive. So, in my opinion, I would, I would stay with Indigo, take advantage of the Trune Association, they are very large. And then, give a time limit. If it doesn't work, whether it be six months, two years, it's over. It's over, and then just lease out that restaurant. But I don't want it to happen, because I think we have a better quality thing, we have a great product here, we just have to get people breaking down the doors. Thank you.
Real quick, just procedurally, you know, President Hoteling's made a motion to, to award it to Kemper Sports. My recommendation, since this is in fact a workshop, my recommendation would be, what we need to decide today is whether or not we are going to bring back a resolution at the next board meeting to cancel the contract with Indigo or not. That's basically what, because I know that you guys, when you vote on something, you don't like to vote on it again, and so what I'm letting you know is, no matter what happens today, we're going to have to come back with a resolution at the next board meeting, and that's when the decision's going to actually take place, so...
So we can't make a decision at the workshop, is what you're saying?
Correct, exactly. So what we're, you know, the decision we need to make today is whether or not we need to draft a resolution, which will get, you know, will get voted on, or if that's a waste of time, if that's not what the board wants. But that's, procedurally, that's the way it needs to work.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Question, David?
Use your mic, please.
If we were to go with Indigo for another, and at the end of the six months, say, no, we want to go back to Kemper, is that RFP still valid? Can we utilize that?
I'd have to check the RFP, but I would imagine that since, you know, the, the six-month time period was known, I'm assuming...
They don't have termination language.
Yeah, the six-month termination...
So, I mean, six months is six months. It's going to be the same regardless.
I, no, I understand that, but could we, in the six months, I get, I understand, you got to give them six-month notice. But, okay, let's say that we extended, we went right now, and we said that we're going to stay with Indigo. But then, at the end of six months, or some magic number, we don't see the improvement, so we give them the six-month notice. Can we use the RFP that exists with Kemper and go to Kemper and tell them we want them to take over effective in six months?
We have to rebid. Inside the RFP, there's a 120-day clause for the current pricing proposed by, I expect. Their pricing is all valid for 120 days.
So even if they agree to stand by their proposal, we couldn't accept it because we'd have to go out to rebid.
Do you, do you then have to go out to everyone again?
It'd be a public bidding process.
You only get two responses, I think. Well, yeah. That's all you're going to get. You'll get a response from Kemper, a response from the plant, I guess. Because these guys are...
We can decide who we want to respond to, right? I mean, if we decide we want to do that, we can just have Kemper and Brown respond if that's what we choose to do.
No, it would have to be open to...
Have to be all four of them?
Yeah, but it would have to be everybody, the whole universe.
They would be the only ones who would respond. I would assume they're the only ones who would respond.
It's hard to know.
Well, unless, I mean, if you tell these guys they're out, they ain't going to respond. So who else is, I mean, unless there's another company that we're not aware of.
Yeah, well, there are many other companies that could have put in bids that might, in the future, the market changes.
I mean, again, let me, what I, what I said earlier was, I'd rather go with Indigo, but I want one more meeting with them, to have a conversation with them, to feel 100% that I want to give them my vote, based on a bunch of questions that I have, which I, you know, went over some of them. So mine, mine was kind of stipulated on, on having one more sit-down with them, if that means anything.
I think that would be, I think that would be the next meeting. I mean, honestly, honestly, if you, if, if we're, if we can't, we can't make a decision today. So if we're going to bring back, we can draft, I can draft a resolution that cancels the contract, and that's the big issue. You know, once the, once the contract, once that cancellation notice has been issued, that's it, you can't un-cancel it. So...
But you can reissue.
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could negotiate a new contract, but once the contract is canceled, it's canceled.
You're to rat the contract with Indigo?
Correct, yeah.
Well, either way, we have to renegotiate the contract, don't we?
No, we don't. We have, we've got a, we've got a currently existing contract right now.
But their terms that they presented...
Are different terms. We would, if we, if we accepted the new contract, then we would cancel the old contract and negotiate the new contract. Well, we don't have to.
We don't have to accept the new one, we can continue under the current one, which provides the six-month clause. Now, if, how close are we to bouncing up against 120 days?
We're going to be close. I was wondering if we have another meeting with these guys. I thought we sent it out in October, the RFP?
It's from the due date of the award, I'm trying to look it up now.
So the end of February is essentially what you're saying?
That's more time than I think it is. So we can't call the other companies and say we needed a 60-month, a 60-day extension? So, we can't call the other companies and say we needed a 60-month, a 60-day extension on the RFP. Will you guys give it to us? Only do we have that ability?
We can ask.
But wouldn't that be legal if the RFP had 120-day clause in it?
As long as it's all afforded to the same entities. But, I mean, they could say, if somebody says, no, you know, we're not willing to, I'm not gonna do that, I don't know, that we could extend, basically, I don't know, I think I'd probably have to research that because we could, if we start changing the terms, we're setting ourselves up for a bid, potentially a bid protest.
A what?
A bid protest. So, if we, if someone, if we said we wanted an extension, and they said, no, we're not giving an extension, and then we said, well, we're gonna get, you said you're not gonna give us an extension, but somebody else will, so you're out. Well, now we've changed the terms of the bid. We can't change the terms--
I can't imagine if we told somebody we needed another 60 days, they would say, no. They're trying to get the business.
Do we have to say that to everybody?
Yes.
We could ask. We can ask, is what you're saying.
Well, they would say yes.
Well, the issue would be if we asked all of them, and for instance, Kemper said no, and Brown said yes. So, we decided in the end to go with Brown because we couldn't make a decision quick enough. Indigo, I mean, Kemper could come back and say that we didn't adhere to the RFP.
What's the RFP on?
So, the RFP was issued 10/27. We actually included an effective date of 180 days, so we have until April 25th.
Oh, good.
So, we're good on time for that.
So, that's not an issue? That changes. Okay, so what does that change it to?
Okay. Let's go back to public comment. If there's any other people from the public that have anything they would like to say?
I, when I had heard that Trune and Indigo had came together, I thought it was just a total meshing of the two companies. They've become one. I understand that's a little different, but still, the, I see Indigo now being under that umbrella and within the organization of Trune. And we know that Trune is the largest management company in the world. And their buying power is tremendous. And I think, under that whole umbrella, they can bring something special to this district that we've been looking for, instead of the ordinary, in the middle-of-the-state golf club. I mean, I love it, but we can do some, we can get some new ideas and do some things, be more, have some creative ideas. And I think a company like that, working with Indigo, would benefit us. My biggest hope, if that were to happen, is we could keep Earl. Because I think he is, he's done the best job, I've been here 15 years, and gone through a couple of superintendents, and to me, he has without a doubt done the best work here. And we, and I, we all really appreciate that. The golf course is made much more playable than it had been. And looks, overall looks are better. In the Trune, between Trune and Indigo, you know, they manage a lot more golf courses in Florida than, which is a good thing, because they all have problems, they can work together, figure things out. I also think that with that combination of Trune and Indigo, that it would help nationwide in marketing Sun and Lake and Sun and Lake Golf. There's a lot of golf programs that they, you know, people go, golf shows, if you will, you know, all over the country. And with a company like Trune and Indigo, I think they could help us let the country know about Sun and Lake. I think they would bring something to that. And they also have a, they have a way to customize, they call it a customized dining Not sure what that means, but that's what they say in their program. And I think that's, obviously, that's where our issues are, our real issues are. But I really believe some of that, on the dining side, and maybe even some on the golf side, but not as much, is your guys' fault. Because you can't, and a lot of that has to do with the sunshine law, and what you can do and what you can't do. And I don't think that you can go in individually, five different guys, five different times, to Mike, or Tanya, or whomever, and you've all got different ideas, different thoughts, different problems or issues with the company. So, they're hearing all kinds of things. You know, Mike, at the end of the week, he's heard from you, 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 and you, and they're all different things. I mean, it's, so somehow, and I know you have to have public meetings, and if that's what you have to do, when you have issues, you've got to sit down, have that meeting, and do it. You can't do it individually. Doesn't work. It's not fair. I know it's more meetings, but something you have to do. You can't do it individually. So, right now, I would be, I'm all for keeping, giving Indigo, however you want to call it, an extension, or whatever you want to do, and get, have that meeting with them, tell them as a group what you want, and they can work with that. They've got Trune to give them some help. I think it can all work out. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Charlie Shields, resident. I don't want to train a new group, because that, to me, looks like we'd be talking about three years in the future before we could even evaluate them as being the right people. The other thing is, is you've given Indigo, I think, adequate notice during these past few weeks of the problems that we have, and I think that they're more than willing to sit down. And as Ray Brooks mentioned, it hasn't really been done before. So, I really think that before we go and, I don't want to say make a dumb decision, but make a decision that we all live to regret, it's my opinion that we stay with Indigo. Thank you.
Dave Albig, resident. You know, I've got mixed emotions on this, and I don't envy you guys at all having this job because it's tough, and it's a lot tougher with these guys sitting here. I realize it. I realize that. You know, I've been through the whole thing, so has Charlie. He's been here long enough to know what we had with Kemper or Kitson. The one thing, one thing I think is lacking with Billy Casper and Indigo, Mike Rippey was here at least four times a year and sat down with each individual supervisor and let them dump on him, so to speak. And a lot of the things or problems were corrected. I think, I think Kitson was more member-friendly than Billy Casper, all due respect to you guys sitting here. The big problem's the restaurant. This restaurant, unless we organize, reorganize the restaurant, the pro shop, the driving range completely, and you're gonna be seeing some new faces, probably, because that's what's gonna have to happen, all due respect to Mike. When these things change, they change dramatically in order for these guys to keep this job. I think, I think they should be probably given another chance, but I think, I think they probably got the message finally. After 10 years, you had a lot of chance to change. It hadn't happened yet. But obviously, there's things people don't like, what's going on, but, but I, you know, at this point, at this point, I, I think maybe they deserve another chance. And as long as, I don't want to get wrapped up with a, in a three-year contract with somebody else that we're having a hard time, hard time getting away from. So, anyway, that's, that's what I thought, think, I really, I think a little, a little philosophical change between management and the membership, because the membership means a lot. These guys are pretty much for the whole best, they're mostly golf members. I think that would help a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, well, then, let me bring it back here, and based on the, so there is no confusion, I will rescind the motion, since I can't really make the motion. And let me make this recommendation as a process for moving forward. I would suggest that we have staff draw up a resolution to cancel the contract, but with the understanding that that resolution will be brought to us in January or February. Whenever we can arrange a meeting where Indigo and Trune can come to us as a board and explain to us how they can improve the operation, and how Trune will be able to add a new level of improvement to the food and beverage operation especially, and maybe provide some additional improvement to golf. I think we all agree Earl has done a good job in turning around what was a problematic course before Earl. But, so they, so I guess what I'm saying is, let's put together the resolution so that we can vote on the resolution up or down after we have heard from Trune and Indigo together to understand what that new relationship would be if we continued with Indigo.
You want, you want us to meet with who?
Trune and Indigo. Because the indications are, if we stay with Indigo, we're gonna get some benefit from Trune. I want to hear from Trune, along with Indigo, as to what that benefit is going to be, particularly in the food and beverage area. And if I'm not sure that we're gonna get the improvement that I want to see, then I'm gonna vote for the resolution. If I am convinced that continuing forward, then I would vote against the resolution. So, that would be my recommendation as a process to move forward is--
I'm sorry, I'm still not--
Okay.
You want to see Trune and Indigo--
Collectively, both--
So, together.
Because supposedly, if we continue with Indigo, we're going to have both entities representing the management. Indigo under Trune.
Indigo is gonna be the company.
Indigo is going to be the company, but there's, the benefit that we're getting from Trune is what I want to understand.
I don't think they can tell you. They've only been, this emerged, the announcement was only a week and a half ago. I don't think they know.
I understand. I'm saying that we'll give them till either the next meeting, which is January 24th, or the first week in February, to get together to talk about how Trune is going to be able to benefit us if we stay with Indigo. If they can't, I want to, I want to move on.
Well, that's your vote.
Fish or cut bait.
I don't want to do that.
Well, okay, that's, that's my recommendation for moving forward.
You want to meet with these people. I want to meet with Indigo. I don't want to meet with Trune.
Why didn't you want to meet with Trune?
I would, I don't know if you second it, but I'd go along with Neil on his proposal.
Okay.
Why would you not want to meet with Trune if they're going to be part of the picture if Indigo continues?
They are not--
They are going to be. He told us so. Tony, you want to clarify? Is Trune gonna be part of the picture if we continue with Indigo?
Yeah, Trune will be part of the picture. You know, when you say part of the picture, we're, obviously, Trune owns Indigo. And as I said earlier, there will be a sharing of ideas, there will be a sharing of personnel. There's, the idea behind the transaction was to complement each other. So, wherever we can do that, that will, that will happen.
And you indicated that their food and beverage operation is stronger than Indigo's food and beverage operation.
They have a, their food and, just to be clear on what I said, I said, we have very successful food and beverage operations around the country.
Right.
But Trune's emphasis is on a higher-end facility, okay? And that, you know, they have specialized in that area, that brand, if you will, of operation. That, however, just because it's at that level, doesn't mean that there aren't pieces of that, of the way they operate that could apply to what we do and a different type of operation. So, we have not yet had that opportunity to share those ideas. That will come, because that's the benefit of having a 600 golf course portfolio, is to be able to share the ideas, you know, across our companies. They have done that with their other acquisitions, but they've kept those entities in place still. OB Sports out, out West, Honors Golf, Green Golf. They've just kept the entities, you know, kept the facilities under those entities, but there's been a sharing of ideas among those companies, you know, and the Trune people. So, I expect the same.
So, the question would be, since this was my suggestion, and at least one of our supervisors doesn't think it's a practical suggestion, so maybe it isn't. But in two to four weeks, do you think you could come together with representatives from Trune, who now owns you, to show how the Trune relationship would benefit us?
Well, obviously, I'll push, I'll pose a question to the Trune guys, if that, you know, if that's something that makes sense. I will say this, I think I can make this commitment, that we will have, you know, we will have had conversations with them to determine how we can make our F and B operations better, or our golf operations for that matter, and they will be having those same conversations with us. I don't know the timing of those things. That's going to happen. That's going to happen. So, at some point, again, Mr. Brooks pointed it out, I mean, we're only, you know, a week or so into the transaction. There will be that merging of personnel at my level and Brian's level, et cetera, where we do that, where we do that kind of sharing. So, I, you know, we, if I can push it forward, I'll push it forward for this particular project, but, you know, I'm just letting you know where we stand with that.
We started at the beginning by saying that Trune was an active bidder still. So, you're asking one company to come in--
It's a unique situation.
Yeah, it's just a different, it's just a different situation here, because remember, when you put the RFP out, we were separate entities.
Right.
Okay? So, we still, we still have to operate under the RFP as-- So we still have to operate under the RFP as separate entities, right? Because that's the way the bids were put in. Your attorney can comment on that. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Tony, I think it behooves you to... If we give you a month, could you talk to Trune and try to convince them for one of them to come here? And we'd like to talk to them?
I can do that. I don't... Again, I'll leave this up to your attorney, whether or not that is something that can be done. Because you have a situation where you have two different entities who have responded, that you are now asking to respond as one entity.
Well, I think the issue is this, is... The question is whether or not to cancel the current contract. That is... That's the pending issue. So obviously, the board, if there's an existing contract, the board has the ability, and Indigo has the ability, to negotiate the terms of that contract, to amend that contract. We don't have to award a bid... We don't have to... We can say, "Yes, thank you for all the bids. We're not making... We're not going to change." That's the board's decision, to not change. And then we sit down with Indigo and negotiate an amended contract. That's doable.
Okay. But the question is, what I'm suggesting, and maybe I'll revise the suggestion again, is that in two weeks or four weeks, whenever Indigo feels they can present, we have a meeting with Indigo as part of our board meeting. So they can present their best case as to why, if we stay with the existing contract or some adjustment to the existing contract, we should stay with Indigo.
Correct. Indigo is the only company that we can do that with.
Correct. And it would be up to Indigo and their new owner, Trune, whether Trune wanted to participate in that meeting. But they could if they wanted to, because they're now the owner of Indigo.
Correct.
That's what I meant. Are you going to feel better if somebody from Trune tells you first? Or somebody from Indigo?
I've heard from Indigo, and we haven't seen change. I want some confidence level that there's going to be some change. If I don't have confidence that there's going to be change, I'm going to vote for a change.
Trune input, because they're an owner. It's the same topic.
Well, you don't want... It's not as good as coming from him. If he talks to Trune, and then he tells us at the meeting what he's got, isn't that just as good?
It might be. All I'm saying is...
That's my alternative suggestion.
I'm saying that in that period, either in two weeks or four weeks, you tell us what works for your schedule, and we'll work our board meeting around it. That we have Indigo come and present their best case as to why we should stay with Indigo.
Right.
And if they can't convince us, then I want the resolution in place that we can vote on.
I don't want that.
Well, we can vote on it either way. We might vote up, we might vote down.
Replacement, and we don't have...
No, we don't have to have a replacement to rescind the agreement. We rescind the agreement and negotiate the replacement.
Well, I'm not doing the... Rescind the agreement before we decide on...
Well, you can't negotiate the agreement until you rescind the agreement. You've got to rescind the agreement before you can negotiate with a new party to take over the management.
The question is going to be, is who's that new party going to be?
Huh?
That's going to be the issue. Because in my opinion, yes, that would have to be part of the same resolution. We're canceling the contract and awarding the bid to X.
Okay.
We haven't decided... If there's an X, we still haven't decided what that X would be.
Although I think there's at least three that would say if we rescind the contract...
We don't know that, do we?
Well, because we can't vote on it. I think the discussion has been that... My recommendation would therefore be to create the resolution to rescind the agreement and award the contract to Kemper.
That's a good one vote.
I'm sorry?
That would be a good one vote. That's your opinion.
It's my opinion. And I guess I'm ready to hear from anybody else on the board as to whether they would support that recommendation, or if they want to wait.
I like your... I would like to get... Give them time and get Trune here with them, if they would like to. I mean, that's...
If Trune doesn't want to come?
If they don't want to come, you tell us. But I think it would behoove you to have them here.
Ultimately, what you guys are looking for, if I'm hearing everything correctly, is you just want to know how... And I think it's more about F&amp;B than it is about golf. You correct me if I'm wrong. But you want...
Both sides, because you're losing money on both sides.
Okay. So will you... You want us to essentially re-present a plan moving forward on how to run the club?
No, I mean...
No. All the points that I brought up, I want covered. I'll send you a list if I...
Or is it...
And I want to know how you're going to take a deficit of $450,000 in the restaurant and improve it to whatever you think and how long it's going to take. I want a plan. That's what I want.
So that's what I was asking. Is it a plan for the F&amp;B that you're mostly concerned about?
Do a plan for golf, too.
Absolutely. That's the biggest hit. But you're losing on both sides. It's not just... So...
I would concentrate on the F&amp;B. If you got the F&amp;B...
Concentrate the F&amp;B, yes.
If you fix that to where it's reasonable, I think we'd all be very happy. That's speaking for myself, of course. And I don't expect... I mean, personally, you can't do it overnight. Or in a year. It's going to take a while. But you've got to come up with a commitment that we can live with and that we agree to. And then by God, you've got to make it.
So to clarify, will that be in a workshop environment, then? In other words, there will be a giving and taking of thoughts in that process? We present something, you say, "Hey, look, can we do it this way?" We say, "Yes, we can do that," or something along those lines? Or you just...
If it was me, it'll be a workshop. But it should be more you giving to us.
I understand. We're going to do the most of the giving, but you're going to comment on it.
You can't hold us back.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So you're going to comment on this. And you're going to ask us, "Okay, if that's the..." "Can you adjust this? Can you adjust that?" Which, by the way, is what I've asked for now a number of times, is workshops, okay?
Don't go there. You're ahead of the game. Don't go there.
I'm just saying. So I mean...
Okay, so I guess, based on what it now sounds is the most practical solution, is hold off on the resolution. And after the January board meeting, we'll have the January board meeting, the landowners meeting, and then a workshop with Indigo to make their case. And then we'll have to decide from there whether or not we move forward with the resolution. And then it's a...
But you're going to have to do the resolution regardless.
Yeah.
Why would you hold off?
But if we do a workshop, we can't vote on the resolution.
No, but we can go ahead and...
We can decide what we want to do.
Get the resolution in process.
Well, yeah.
I mean, if you want to decide now what everybody wants, we can get a verbal... I don't have time with doing that.
I don't think you're going to do that, can you?
We can't take action, because it's not only action.
Why would we not move on the resolution at the meeting prior to the workshop?
Because...
And have it done.
Because we want the workshop prior to the vote on the resolution.
You're going to have to have the resolution at some point.
At some point. If the workshop doesn't convince us to stay with Indigo, then we need the resolution. But putting the resolution on the same meeting as the workshop, when the workshop follows the meeting, we won't have the presentation on the workshop prior to the vote. And that's pointless. We need to have the workshop before we can have the vote. So we'll have the workshop after the January board meeting and landowners meeting, and decide then whether we give Indigo more time or if we go forward with the resolution that we'd bring back to the February meeting.
To confirm, this is going to be a separate meeting, is that correct? A separate workshop meeting?
It would be the same day, but it would be a separate workshop after the board meeting and the landowners meeting.
Where is the landowners meeting? Is it here?
It's here, on the 24th.
It's here?
24th.
So we would just stay here?
Yep.
Correct. Have the workshop then, and then we'd have the resolution, potentially...
In February.
In February, at the February 5th and 4th.
Yeah, it's the 22nd.
Yeah.
So you want to do a workshop after the landowners meeting and the regular meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, the landowners meeting should be rather quick. There's no election or anything.
There's no election? It should be rather quick?
Yeah, the landowners meeting shouldn't be very big. And we've got a few things that we've put onto the board meeting for that day.
You okay with that? You'll be ready in time?
What date are we at? Where are we at?
Okay, this is January 20.
Two weeks from today, yes. We can... We'll be together by that time.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
What's the time on that?
It'd be after the board meeting and the landowners meeting. So the workshop would probably begin sometime around 11 o'clock, like this one did.
Got it. Anything else for me?
I think... Thank you. I think you hear that? Any further discussion from the board on the workshop? This workshop? We've got at least a direction to go forward, which was the primary goal of this workshop, was to figure out where we go from here. And I think we've got direction. So I'm good, unless anybody else has anything else to add. I'm sorry?
Finish it yet.
What do you want to finish?
You've got to decide the company if we throw them out.
No, we don't.
I thought we could have an RFP. He's got to have a company if we do the RFP.
He's not going to prepare any resolution until after the workshop.
Correct. Because there's a potential there won't be a resolution. Because if there's no change...
Oh, so you're not going to prepare... Okay.
If there's no change, then the board just says, you know, "Thanks for your bids, but we're not making a change." There's no resolution neither.
Now, what happens if we decide we want to go with Indigo, but we want to go to their new terms as opposed to the old terms? What do we got to do then?
You only have a six-year... A six-month contract with us, just to be clear. It's a six-month contract. That's it. At any given time, you can... And that's why I wrote the agreement the way I did, so that if you guys changed your mind, you weren't obligated, by the way, to what the other guys are telling you that they want. And, you know, and you can have... You can take us to task and tell us, you know, "You don't want us anymore after six months." Those other guys are not doing that, if you look at your terms.
Okay. But we can sit down with you and do another contract if we go forward?
Yeah, we can keep the current contract or renegotiate new deal with the existing contractor without impacting the RFP.
Okay.
Yes. That typically happens after you award... You know, you make an award and then you negotiate.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I think we're done. Thank you, everybody.